Good evening, Littleton. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for April 25th, 2022, as we do for every meeting. Ask the clerk to start a meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm not going to be able to do that very many more times.
Which part?
The pledge.
Nope.
I unvolunteer.
All right. So, folks, tonight, we've got a pre-packed agenda, so I'll go through it kind of quickly, hopefully. We will get into reading of the mail from the town administrator, then we'll get into department and board updates and requests. We've got something from Shade Tree Committee and Conservation Commission, Elder and Human Services, Littleton Community Television, and the Finance Department. We've got appointments for the Conservation Commission. We've got joint meetings with the -- a joint meeting with the school committee to appoint a vacancy that was filled by the resignation of Ms. Rasius. So, we've got some, it looks like, some pretty good, pretty qualified folks to interview, along with the school committee, to make an appointment this evening. We'll get into licensing, one-day liquor license for establishment down at One Monarch Drive, informational presentation from LePole Companies, and then we'll have an annual town meeting update on Article 20 relative to 31 Shattuck Street and the senior center project update from LLB, the architect. And then we'll go through the task of assigning articles to the Select Board members. Town administrator's assistant, town administrator update, there'll be a temporary salary increase discussed, one-year extension with the Shelby Boards of Health, approval or requested approval of a construction manager at risk for the senior center, and an update on earth removal permit for nine-air road, and then a discussion relative to the town administrator's performance review. We also have some minutes from the April 4th and April 11th meetings. We're anticipating adjournment at 8:55, so try to get home for the fourth quarter. Mr. Town Administrator, you've got some mail for us?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just three things in your packet. There's an email that was submitted on behalf of the Girl Scouts for a ceremony that's going to be held on May 5th at the high school, and that's for girls who've received their bronze, silver, and gold presidential awards in the last few years. They've invited members of the board. Second letter is a letter dated April 13th that we received in the mail, U.S. mail, from L.L.W.D., providing a notice regarding sewer connections for properties abutting the sewer construction project, a meeting that they're having. It's on the agenda for Thursday at 7:00 at the police station. And number three is that the March 31st, 2022, we get a letter regarding the 2022 yearly operating plan and providing notice of herbicide applications along the railroad right away and around switched in signals. The application period will run from April 1st through August 15th, and that's all we have, Mr. Chair.
Clarification, the meeting for the sewer is on Wednesday, right? The 27th?
Yes, I'm sorry, Wednesday, thank you.
We have a meeting on the 28th, isn't it?
Yeah, in the morning, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. All right, so department board updates, requests, Shade Tree Committee and Conservation Commission?
Yes, we received a request from both the Shade Tree and the Conservation Committee supporting the Select Board recognize April 29th as Arbor Day in Littleton, and we have a proclamation in your packet put to be read and approved.
Ready? You have it there? Yep.
Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Littleton, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, as Arbor Day in the Town of Littleton, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated this 25th day of April, 2022, Select Board Chair, Charles Decost.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, that is the proclamation. We do -- is there any discussion around it?
There was a word "city" in there, ought to be "town" at one point. I didn't catch that.
Or "community," yeah, that's the only -- I think it's because the organization is called Tree City USA, so I think it's a kind of a universal statement.
Well, people don't talk about trees a lot lately in town, and that's what I'm hearing, so I'm all for this. We need a --
A motion moved that the Select Board vote to recognize April 29th as Arbor Day in Littleton and authorize the chair to sign the proclamation on behalf of the board.
Second.
Motion made, the second by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Great, thank you all, and duly authorized.
That's the Lorax himself.
Which way is this going?
Over here.
Okay. All right, that's good stuff. All right, next up, we have Elder and Human Services. We have to approve a donation. Love these.
Hello, good evening. Liz Trudiac, Director of Elder and Human Services. I'm here tonight because we received an unsolicited donation of $900 from the Friends of the Littleton Council on Aging, and this is specifically for the new building fund. So, I'm here to respectfully request acceptance of that donation.
That's awesome.
Thank you, friends of the council. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other discussions? All right, the motion.
Moved that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General law chapter 44, section 53A, and per its policy on solicitation and acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose, to accept donations to the Department of Elder and Human Services, EHS, for the new building gift fund from the Friends of the Council on Aging in the amount of $900.
Second. Motion made, seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you to the Friends.
Anthony, is that monitor not working? Is that what?
Is it not? Oh. Microphone's not on.
Mark, can you get this going?
Okay, next up, we have Mr. Vales, I think I saw.
My bad.
Discussion from LCTV Advisory Committee?
Yes. Bill Vales is here.
Yep.
Bike's working well. Let me go.
Oh, yeah? Hello.
Hello, Select Board and administrators. My name's Bill Vales, and I'm the chairman of the Littleton Community TV Advisory Committee. And tonight, we have a Verizon contract which we brought to you. If you remember, in February 2021, we started on the process of renewing contracts for both Comcast and Verizon, which came due coincidentally to one another. And in February 2021, we did the ascertainment process, which the town was allowed, town members were allowed to input to. And we then proceeded first on the Comcast agreement, which we signed right around August, I believe, of '22, and then we started on the Verizon agreement, which was expiring December 11th. We did not get a deal done by December 11th. It went on and on and on and on, and here we are today with an agreement, finally, that has been signed by Verizon. Anthony and I received a copy of a signed cover letter from Verizon, so that's where we are. The key points on the contract, it's a five-year contract. It allows for $100,000 in capital to be given to LCTV to support its PEG channels. We all -- and that $100,000 is payable the first three years of the contract, okay? So, that's effectively guaranteed. We also maintain the 5% gross annual revenue that's paid to the town quarterly, so that's still, still in play. So, that is where we are. Any questions?
You weren't anticipating we were going to get a five-year deal, so good work, thanks.
Five-year deal is the norm with Verizon. If you remember, Comcast is a 15-year, 10-year.
Ten-year.
Take that back. Yeah, it's a 10-year deal for Comcast. Verizon is a five-year deal, and that is the norm for Verizon. I know that anecdotally, okay, based on what I hear from them, so there's not extensive research behind those words from me.
Got it. I thought they were looking for even a shorter period on this, on this go-around.
Say again?
I thought they were looking for like a three-year or something even shorter this time around, but.
No, they were looking for five-year, but they have a three-year cancellation clause, so the fact that we have our capital guaranteed for three years protects us from any cancellation.
Excellent. Thanks for your work on this, Bill. Appreciate it, yeah, absolutely. Any questions?
Well, I want to thank LCTV, Mark, and the staff, and the LCTV Advisory Committee to be there to vote and discuss these things as they come up, because we try to stay on top of it, and a special thanks to Alan McCray for his guidance through the process.
Great. I'm just curious, Bill, since we were at a bit of a standstill in December, what was materially different, or what changed, anything in particular between then and now noteworthy?
That's a good question. I mean, I have my opinion, but it's just an opinion.
So, it was more on their end?
Yeah, absolutely. We have been ready at every step of the process. We were well aware of our contract expiring on December 11th. We, like, we had a joint ascertainment process started at February 2021 for both providers, okay? And then, like we said, we chose to do Comcast first, and then Verizon, which started in earnest around August. In my judgment, plenty of time.
Right.
This isn't a rocket science-type process, okay? Talk to the vendors, talk to our vendors to see why they treat customers like this would be my advice.
Fair enough, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's nothing further, the motion?
Moved that the Select Board vote to approve the Verizon cable television renewal license effective December 11th, 2021 through December 10th, 2026.
Second. Moved, seconded by Mr. Knox. It is a roll call vote, runs license. Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Ms. Nodles?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
The chairs in favor? It's unanimous, great. Thank you very much for all your effort on this.
Thank you all.
Until the entire committee. Reserve fund transfer.
Good evening, Honorable Select Board Members. Alicia Nonley Benjamin, Finance Director. The reason I'm putting forth this transfer for $33,000 for fuel is the cost of fuel has more than doubled, and unfortunately, that was not accounted for. There's going to be two orders, the DBW told me, so we've been able to cover one, and this 33 would cover the second.
Okay. All right. It is what it is. Lots to do in business, right?
Yeah. And this is for just the building heat, or both fuel for vehicles too, or?
Fuel for vehicles to diesel and unleaded.
Okay.
All right.
Move that the Select Board support the reserve fund transfer in the amount of $33,000 to the fiscal year '22 fuel budget.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Ms. Napoli, and this is a roll call vote? No. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Alicia.
All right.
They may all say that, Chuck. They may all say that, but it just was carried over from.
Okay.
The only one will be the school committee one.
The appointment?
Yeah.
Will be roll call? Okay. We can't roll into that yet, right? So, Finance Department, this opportunity for public input? Anybody that wishes to be heard, please come to the microphone, state your name, your address, and we ask that comments be two minutes, and the full time period will be about 10 minutes. Thanks, Megan Chair. Go ahead.
Good evening, Megan, 428 Shattuck Street, and I'm just here to follow up on and speak to an email that I sent to the board of the Select Board, and I copied the Shade Tree Committee, and basically, it was a suggestion to consider in regards to the 31 Shattuck Street eminent domain and the proposed senior center on the tennis court area, to consider making a main entrance to the new senior center, and even the library be over on the end of Shattuck Street where the old library was, that entrance, if that could be somehow redesigned to be the main entrance so that it could encourage people to come off of King Street and not necessarily travel down Shattuck Street, or give another main kind of option to enter, and then that might actually, if the architects could consider looking to see if it's at all possible to shift it over so that this driveway here could maybe be moved over, or I don't even know, maybe eliminated, and then everything could shift over a little bit so that 31 Shattuck Street, there's about 11 to 15 trees, and one of them in the front is this beautiful magnificent tree, and I looked at the plans and just the way it was a couple of weeks ago presented with the preliminary plans, it looks like the driveway of that house and those trees would be compromised. So, I just wanted to consider that suggestion, if you guys could talk about it with the architects and see if that's a possibility, and also, because there's a lot of concerns about people already speeding down Shattuck Street with -- I just had a nice conversation with about five or six young middle-school boys on bicycles today, and I was worried about talking to them in my driveway because of the cars that speed down the street. There's also potholes. I was walking with a woman, and I was afraid she could twist her ankle on one of the potholes, and, and basically, I think it would be a great option to have that area be the main entrance. That's, that's my suggestion, so thank you.
Thanks, Megan. So, is there anybody else? Mr. Sanders?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to know if you're going to allow the public to maybe ask some questions during the presentation of the 550?
That's the intention. It's all a matter of how the, how the presentation goes, and if there's people that are interested, in all likelihood, I will be allowing for.
Okay, thank you.
You bet, thank you. Anyone else? Member updates? Mr. Knox? Thank you.
Yep, I want to use my time to read a prepared statement. At our, at our April 12th meeting, town employee Diane Crory brought information to the board's attention that greatly disturbed me. I have since met with Diane, HR, other town employees, members of the public, and Littleton business owners to discuss the matter. I want to remind everyone that no board member is authorized to speak or act on behalf of the Select Board without prior authorization. No single member can withdraw funding or support to any entity without the board's approval. The people and businesses of Littleton, especially town employees, deserve to be protected from intimidation and retaliation from all sectors, but most importantly, from people in power who would threaten them. The best way to do that is to go on the record like Diane did two weeks ago. If people are uncomfortable standing before the board and speaking publicly, it is not required. You can document troubling interactions and submit them to the Select Board, HR, or the town administrator, and you can always email me directly at mnorthouse@littletonmass.org. I have not discussed this matter with any other members of this board, so I don't know their opinions, but speaking for myself, I want to tell town employees that I deeply appreciate your work and contributions. I am here to support you any way I can, in whatever capacity the law allows. You can come to me anytime for any reason. Thank you. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. I, I've got one, actually, let you guys go. Sorry. Ms. Napoli?
No, you go first.
Well, all I was going to do prior to Megan's, all I was going to speak to tonight, I should say, prior to Megan's letter today and appears tonight, is to offer my support for, you know, obviously, you folks have been more involved in the details of the plan, but now that it's before the board as a whole, and I love the design, and I'm glad that that site seems to be working out, but what the neighbors up there, you know, raise those issues seem awfully legitimate when you're out there walking it and looking at it, and it just, it, you know, intuitively says, well, gee, if you just move 30 feet to the left, you'd save that whole row of trees and, you know, the boundary trees, as well as the big prominent tree that Megan referenced. Yeah, that it also, if you take a step back and think about it, we've incrementally changed a lot of the activity on this site, but we really haven't addressed universally the, you know, the egress access part, and what would Megan raise, you know, in terms of using that side of the building for a main entrance for all the activities on here. I'd like to see that looked at, especially without the library in that wing of the building, then the, you know, the spots that they had for parking up there just aren't as used as much as the ones out here, and, and I hope that that suggestion is seriously considered and that we take a look at it.
You can go ahead.
The only comments I have tonight, as far as member updates, is yesterday, we swore in our new fire chief, Mr. or Chief Robert Connor was sworn in yesterday afternoon. Nice ceremony, kind of a beautiful day, well-represented, the members of the fire department, some members of the police department, many, the volunteer corps was there, many members of the community, as well as many chiefs and folks from other departments were there for the, for the ceremony, as well as members of the Select Board, and looking forward to working with Chief Connor and just moving the department forward. He seems like a true professional, and I think that's great. I think we've always kind of referred to our department as a professional department, and I look forward to him bringing it to the next stage, the next step.
Right, thank you, thank you. So, just to respond to Mr. Nordhaus's public statement, I would have preferred that he would have come to me personally to talk to me as a member of this board. I think that would have been more productive and professional, but he chose not to do that. So, as you know, there's been an onslaught of information circulating about comments that I made privately in response to a letter to the Select Board. My comments were made public along with claims of retaliation by an elected town employee. In the normal course, personnel matters are handled in confidence. This is not a personnel matter, and I've never been notified of any complaints made against me by any town employee or another elected official. My comments were read publicly for two reasons, to defame and personally harm me and fuel distrust of the Select Board. This is a regrettable and hurtful situation which should have never happened, and I acknowledge my mistake, and I am sorry that I put the Friends of Littleton veterans and my board in this position. I have 12 months left on this board, and I will continue to serve out my term as I was elected to do so. I am grateful for the unconditional friendships and silent majority of people in Littleton who continue to support me. This is my last public statement on this matter. I appreciate everybody's support up to your, up to this point. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Napoli. All right. All right. Moving on from public input, members' updates, we've got appointment for CONSCOM, we've got, you guys are well-represented, okay? So, there's a couple of appointments you want to take?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we received the resignation of Julie Rupp as a full member of the Conservation Commission. She did express an interest in staying on as an associate member, and then we went out and advertised for the position, and we had two applicants. The CONSCOM had an opportunity to discuss it, and their recommendation to the board is that Mr. Livingston be appointed. So, you have two motions or actions to take tonight. One would be to appoint Julie Rupp as an associate member, and then consider the appointment for the permanent position.
Okay, so I'd say structurally, it's probably better to appoint the permanent position first and then the associate member, but other than that, I think, if the recommendation of the CONSCOM, having interviewed, duly interviewed the two applicants, and it's your recommendation to appoint Mr. Livingston, unless any of the board members have any questions or comments?
Ordinarily, if there are multiple candidates, we hear from them, and I'd like to, you know, I don't intend to do anything shocking here, but I do want to hear from anybody that's interested and enough to apply for a position.
Absolutely. Mr. Livingston's here. Okay. So, if either of the applicants, Mr. Bodett or Ms. Livingston, care to make any comments or introduce yourself, please come to, come to the podium and just introduce yourself and a couple of words about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
Sure, I'm Michael Livingston at One Chipmunk Lane, and briefly, I am interested in serving the conservation of the town is something I'm interested in. I'm interested in caring for nature in general, but I've appreciated living in Littleton and the community that we have here, and would like to do what I can to preserve the feel of the town, but keep things moving forward as is sensible. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from any of the board members?
Nope, thank you.
As always, yeah.
Thank you for spending the time and helping the town. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
We always appreciate folks coming forward, and it's much appreciated.
It's my pleasure.
Great. Mr. Bodett? No? Okay. All right, I'll entertain the motion to appoint Mr. Livingston.
I move that the Select Board vote to appoint Michael Livingston as a member on the Conservation Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Second. Motion made, seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Livingston. You do need to go to the clerk's office and get sworn in before you can act in the capacity of a member of the Conservation Commission.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you, appreciate you volunteering. All right, so unless there's any further discussion relative to appointing Ms. Rupp as an associate member, let's.
Glad she's willing to participate within her capacity.
Right.
Moved that the Select Board vote to appoint Julie Rupp to an associate position on the Conservation Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous again, great. Thank you all. I believe Julie will need to go to the clerk and get sworn into a different position as well, so appreciate it, thanks.
You like to stick around? You like to stick around?
I'm tempted.
It's a nice night out there.
Yeah, you guys will watch it streaming.
Exactly.
All right, so we are at 7:00, so we will.
Right on time, you're doing all right.
Not bad, right?
Yeah.
I'm hungry. Brad, you want to come up with this? I don't know if the school committee wants to, yeah, sorry, Jen didn't see you.
Wherever you want to be.
If you are comfortable back there, that's fine, too. So, this is a joint meeting with the school committee, and it looks like the school committee has a forum, as, as does the Select Board, obviously, in session, so we do have some multiple candidates for this appointment, and it looks like they're listed in our packets in alphabetical order, so I'm just going to ask if, Mr. Chairman, if you're okay with it, I'll just ask each member to come up in order and give us all an opportunity to get to know them, and they can introduce themselves to the community, and then we can have some deliberation. You guys open? You are now? Your meeting's open?
Yeah, we're open.
It's very official. All right, so the order that we have in front of us is. All right, so, um, the order that we have in front of us is, um, first up would be Sanjay Gouda. Great, if you could just come up to the podium, that'd be great. Just introduce yourself, let us know your address and why you're interested in being the appointee for the school committee.
Absolutely, thank you.
You bet.
Hi, everyone, my name is Sanjay Gouda. I live in, uh, Littleton, um, McIntosh, McIntosh. I've been here for about seven, over seven years. Uh, before that, I was in, uh, Chumsford for a long period of time. Uh, we love the town. I have two girls, a 13-year-old seventh grader and 10-year-old, uh, fourth grader. We love the neighborhood community, and, and I was also here to, um, help myself with whatever the town needs. Um, and in my day job, I, uh, I'm a, uh, technology professional working for Verizon, uh, over 20, 20-plus years of experience in the, in the technology space. Um, as part of my, outside of my day job, I've been part of various, uh, community organizations for 20-plus years. I led some organizations, I've been part of, uh, cultural service, community, so many, quite a few organizations, and also have been part of some organizations where we, uh, help the, uh, low income, educating the low-income, uh, communities and community service. So, uh, very short, I, uh, I believe I have a skill set and the, and the leadership that can help with the town and, uh, for myself to whatever that is needed. And, uh, appreciate the opportunity to have me here, and thank you very much.
Great. Then just ask you to stay there and just open up if there, if any of the members of either board have any questions of Mr. Gouda?
Um, I remember that Sanjay had applied earlier in the year when we had a vacancy in the Personnel Committee, and appreciate that you, um, want to get involved in town government and hope we can accommodate you, um, specific to the school committee position. Uh, do you have, uh, any particular topics of interest that you want to pursue as a school committee member, or skills that you bring to the table that might be unique and for our consideration?
Absolutely. I think, um, you know, I, I provide, I, I believe I can bring the, uh, very diverse background and fresh idea, fresh ideas to the community and, and, and the whole process in general. And also work with the, a number of, uh, school districts in my various, uh, uh, community organizations, uh, working with, bringing, uh, you know, a few, uh, creative, uh, programs and ideas to various school districts in the, um, in the, in the Commonwealth, um, just working with them, what the issues are. And every community has a, you know, uh, very diverse students and immigrant community, and what those issues are and how do we solve some of those things. I've worked with the, you know, some of the school districts. And I believe with all the, uh, experience that I have in working with the, um, all these different organizations and, and my skill set, I hope I can, uh, I believe I can add some value to the and contribute meaningfully to the, uh, voting.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Hall. Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you.
Uh, is there any one particular, um, issue or topic or improvement maybe or change that you might want to focus on over the course of the next year if you were to join the school committee?
I think the, uh, you know, I was, uh, thinking about that. Basically, the immigrant community issues are quite different from in general. And sometimes it's very subtle. You know, we don't, uh, usually kind of appear as a problem, but there are so many problems as immigrant communities or even just in general minority communities come across. And I hope I can bring some of the issues that are, you know, as those issues that are, those communities face and, and, and kind of solve in a way that can, you know, kind of be part of the entire community or, or, or a school system and, you know, things like that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
No, no, yours, no, no, I go last.
Um, so, the Board, the Board of Health is ultimately the, you know, the final authority, um, when it comes to health matters, but I know that there was a fair amount of pushback from the school committee on the mask mandate, and I'm curious, um, where you see the relationship between the school committee and the Board of Health on those, on those issues? You know, do you support a mask mandate? And will you abide by the Board of Health's decrees if it comes to that?
Absolutely. I think, uh, you know, what we have been facing last two years, nobody could actually even comprehend before that. So we don't even know all the side effects of all the things that are happening. Of course, there are so many things, we have opinions and things like that, but at the end of the day, it's a public issue. It's a general public issue. And, uh, if there is a mandate to actually follow the, you know, the mask, I think better to be cautious than otherwise. So truly support that.
Thank you.
All right, thoughtful answer. Um, I've got a question, but I don't want to open up to you guys if you... Okay. My question's going to be the same for each of you, so if anybody else is ready. If appointed this evening, uh, do you plan on running in 2023 for the remainder of the term or for the full term?
Uh, I might, I don't know at this time. Um, you know, I want to offer myself with the, uh, services and the capabilities and the skills that I have to kind of, you know, contribute. Uh, honestly, I don't know at this time, but, you know, depending on how things could be, uh, I might.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, questions were...
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yeah. And I didn't want to touch, I didn't want to touch the mask question with a tentacle.
No, no problem.
Thanks for, thanks for doing my... But no, I think, thank you very much. I think we heard.
Similar, similar set of questions here.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sanjay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, next, we have Ted Painter.
Good evening, I'm Ted Painter, and I live at 124 Foster Street. First of all, I'd like to apologize for my attire, but I just got back from the track. I'm the head coach of the girls' track team here at the high school, and we had a captain's meeting because we have a track meet tomorrow, where we're hoping to remain undefeated. So, um, prior to, uh, being the head cross-country indoor track and outdoor track coach here in Littleton, uh, I was an army officer for 20 years.
Thank you.
And, uh, after I retired, I was a lobbyist for veterans organizations down in Washington, DC. I was the, uh, Legislative Director for a veteran service organization, and then I was also the Director of a consortium of veteran service organizations. It included 32 veteran service, veteran service organizations. It was called the National Military Veterans Alliance. Uh, so I kind of led and organized the efforts of those 32 veteran service organizations, uh, to best serve the interests of veterans and military retirees down in DC. So after I retired my suit and tie and COVID allowed me to grow my hair long and not shave every day, um, that's when I decided that, you know, I'm kind of at the point in my life where, uh, I'm at the service, I'm at the, at the service point of my life, and so I basically dedicate, dedicating most of my time right now to coaching. And, uh, this is just a good time for me to, uh, step up and fill the vacancy if, uh, if I'm selected. Uh, I have the time, I have the interest. I have two kids currently in the school. One's in the middle school, one's in the high school. And, uh, we've been members of the community now for seven years, seven years. So, um, yeah, it's just that, that's where I'm at in, at this particular crossroads of my life. So, um, if, open to your questions at this point.
Great, thanks, Ted.
Uh, Ted, uh, greeting your resume, you're a teacher.
I, I'm a licensed teacher. I'm not currently a teacher.
Yeah, but tell a little bit about your experience in teaching or what areas you worked in.
Sure, I'm, I'm licensed in social studies. And, uh, last year, I actually filled a, what amounted really to a long-term substitute teaching position out in Townsend. Um, I taught sixth grade. It was one of the best experiences I've ever had. Um, it was, uh, it was a, um, kind of an immediate fill need that, that the school district found itself in, uh, in late August because the teacher that I replaced, uh, was, got hired by another district. She left and didn't really give them any notice, and they, they needed somebody. And, uh, I happened to be at the right place at the right time and got hired to fill that temporary position. And taught social studies and DLA, which I'm not licensed in, but, but, um, it was sixth grade, so, you know, I can spell a little bit and know how to do some basic punctuation. So it all worked out. And, uh, and then after that, uh, that, that was just a phenomenal experience, but they didn't, they didn't keep that position open. The school district was, uh, decreasing in size, so they actually eliminated a couple of, of teaching positions. And so, um, I didn't stay there, and, uh, I was able to, you know, just kind of get back in with both feet into coaching.
Go, Justin.
Yeah. Hey, Justin.
Hey there.
Um, I had the same question about the teaching experience or use of the license, and then, um, was curious. You had initially, uh, pulled papers for the three-year seat. I think you may have turned them in and then withdrew, and then here you are tonight for the one-year appointment. So, just looking to understand why that is.
Yeah, well, one of the reasons, I know this was a question that I heard somebody else get asked. Uh, one of the reasons why I want to be on the school committee is because as a coach, uh, especially as a coach of a girls' team, I deal, I have dealt with eating disorders. And, um, it's, it's a problem, um, and there's not a policy to effectively deal with the problem. And the way to change the policy is to do it through our committee or your committee. Uh, the school is basically powerless to change the current policy, uh, which really isn't a policy at all. And so when issues crop up, uh, there's kind of a lot of passing the buck in terms of who has to deal with certain aspects of, uh, different issues that arise. And coaches are left to, uh, sort of make decisions that medical professionals should really be making. And so that's, that's the, that's the main focus. Uh, that's the main reason why, the main thing I'd like to accomplish uh, in, in a year-long, uh, term on the school committee.
Okay, and not to steal maybe your question shot, but you were initially signed up for the three, and now it's the one.
Yeah.
So at the completion of the one-year term, do you think you'd be interested in...
I don't know.
Fair answer, right, you have it. Yeah, I get it. Mr. Vai.
Um, I think that's interesting. I'd like to dig a little deeper into that. I mean, we don't think, get too too deep, but I'm just curious to know, when you say the policy, you'd like to change the policy, can you give a little bit more detail on what you mean by that?
Yeah, so, uh, right now, if, if there's a person, if there's a child with an eating disorder on an athletic team, we have, the current policy says that any student that is going to play sports in high school, they have to have a, a physical, and it has to be, obviously, they have to be approved by a doctor to engage in sports. That, well, that physical is typically done over the summer. Okay? And so somebody with an eating disorder may be perfectly fine in August, but by December, things can start going south. But because they've got a physical signed by a doctor that says they're good to go, they're good to go, even if they're not good to go. And so, you know, in dealing with the school administration and nurses, um, coaches are often told, well, you need to talk to the parents. Okay, that's fine if the parents want to talk to us, but if they don't, um, it, it can become an issue. And so in order to mitigate issues, again, rather than having coaches kind of put a hat on that we're really not qualified to wear, um, something as simple as if a kid... You said you didn't want to get too far into the weeds, but you asked. So, so if, if a kid has a known, if we know a kid has an eating disorder, okay? One thing that, a couple of different things that might be able to be done is maybe one physical's not good enough. If we know they have an eating disorder, because we know eating disorders, the health of an athlete or a student can change weekly with an eating disorder. There are probably some checks that could happen along the way discreetly that could inform, um, coaches and educators and school nurses as to the actual health of that child and not the health of that child in August by the time we get to May.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yep.
We've, um, coming down the line, you've touched on some of the questions I had. My question would be, you've got a lot of experience working on our students and training them and pushing them to excellence, and we appreciate that. I guess my question was more generally, um, has that given you insights into what's working at the schools and what's not? Like, you, you, you hear them on the buses, you hear people talking, you, um, do you think, has that given you any insights or any different perspective?
It does. It does. I'm assuming you want me to elaborate.
No, I'm just trying to get a sense of...
Sounds like an answer my son would give.
Um, yeah, it does. I mean, they, you know, Littleton is, we're very fortunate. For the most part, we've got very high-performing kids, both academically, athletically, and behaviorally. Um, so I think most of what is being done is working very, very well. Um, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions from the Select Board? Pretty well covered.
Uh, the same question about the Board of Health and, uh, the relationship between the school committee and the Board of Health.
Sure.
Regarding the mask mandate.
Well, the bottom line is, is, is we should follow the science. Thank you. Period.
Good answer.
All right, thank you very much.
Actually, yeah, before, before you sit down, Ted, and it's more, it may be more of a question for the, for the, the actual school committee. Where Ted is a teacher, is there any conflict?
So I, I actually...
Thank you.
...found this out. So, uh, all Ted would have to do is sign a 216, conflict of interest form.
Which I've already done.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's on file.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Rather get it out there, and, you know, full disclosure. Thanks. Pulling all the slaps. All right, um, where am I? Okay. Binal Patel? You'd... Appreciate it.
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Binal Patel. I live at 15 Douglas Road in Littleton. Um, we are new to Littleton. We moved exactly a year ago in April, um, and we started... My two daughters started at Shaker Lane this fall. They're in kindergarten and second grade. Um, I joined the School Advisory Committee at Shaker Lane to learn more about the school, to really offer my time and my expertise and my perspective. Um, I've been in the field of education for about 15 years, primarily in the field of early childhood. So I've taught anywhere from preschool to toddler to infants, really younger than five-year-olds. Um, then opened my own program in 2013 and was the board president there for a while, became a parent. My two daughters went through that program when they were babies, and then was asked to take on the role of director. So I became an administrator, um, at a small childcare program. And then COVID happened, and I had to figure out how to navigate this program through some very unexpected turbulence, if you will. There is no Zoom school for infants, so we had to figure out really how to keep our program open, how to have tuition, how to pay faculty. Um, and it was a lot, and I, I was the only administrator there. Um, and so we really worked together as a community. I since left the program, and now I'm in the world of nonprofit and advocacy. Um, and we really support all childcare programs in the state. So I work very closely with the state. Um, and for the past two years, became the COVID testing lady of Massachusetts. Um, because K through 12 schools had started COVID testing, lady of Massachusetts. Because K through 12 schools had started COVID testing, there was no program for childcare. So we advocated with the governor, we got the approval, we got the funding. And I know more about COVID testing than I ever thought I would. I've worked with labs all across New England and we now support over 700 programs doing COVID testing in Massachusetts childcare programs. And I'm very passionate about education and hope that I can bring that perspective and passion to the committee.
Great. Thank you. Jump in. Brad.
Go ahead, Brad.
Reverse the order.
So thanks for that. You, you wrote in your, in your application about your experience as, as someone who came through the American education system, but who also sees it through the eyes of someone whose family didn't.
Yeah.
Would you mind elaborating on that and maybe how that you might bring it out to our committee?
Yeah, absolutely. And if I'm going to be asked later, I'll just address it now about issues that I'm passionate about and DEI is certainly one of them. It's something that I brought to my school as an administrator. I've done a lot of training and really consider that of value, not just for my children, but any school committee that we're a part of. I was on the DEI council in my previous school committee. So I came to this country when I was five years old. So I've been in kindergarten since I've been coming to this school, but my parents really had no idea about what the school system was like. And one of the first memories I have is the teacher pronouncing my name incorrectly the very first day of school and going home crying and saying she doesn't know who I am, like this teacher doesn't know. And that was one of the first pieces of feedback I brought to my previous district is knowing how to pronounce a child's name is really the most basic and the most important thing that you can do in knowing that child. And this is part of the reason I wanted to join the Shaker Lane Advisory Committee as well. And a lot of the feedback that I've given is about events and how to be inclusive of all families and some things that I've noticed in terms of culturally, it's actually very intimidating to approach a teacher in a curriculum-type setting. And I saw a lot of parents afraid to ask about how their child would go to the bathroom in kindergarten or how they would buy lunch and didn't know who to ask and just sort of stood there. And so I suggested actually having kindergarten ambassadors perhaps where parents could ask each other, where we could have a place for them to ask, that's not just the teacher. And that's actually something that we're implementing this year. So really for me, it's, you know, it's more than when you think about DEI, there is definitely thinking about professional development and curriculum and all of that. But it's, sometimes it's simple as pronouncing a child's name. And I think that's just as important. So hopefully I can bring that perspective as well.
Just curious, the program that you run now, or what do you mean that you provide to run childcare for COVID testing?
So I actually work in a nonprofit. I don't work in a program anymore. We support all the childcare programs in the state, anywhere from advocacy, like we have a bill in the Senate right now in terms of supporting parents, affording childcare, to running programs like COVID testing. Because childcare programs didn't have access to COVID testing, we created the program, advocated for it, got the funding, and we now run it. So I have a team that really works with the lab, sends supplies to the programs. We do all the logistics for it. We do like workforce programming for teachers. Again, teachers can't afford to go to school in early childhood because they're getting paid barely minimum wage. So we're offering free degrees and free programs. So it's really just a range of support for childcare programs and educators.
My question would be, so I think I found something online, maybe it was when you were serving as a director. And it seemed to speak a lot about policy creation and then the budget, running the budget as well. And that's, that's two of the three actual primary functions of the school committee. And I was just wondering if you feel like you are, you know, equally qualified in both areas or if you would gravitate more towards one or the other. Just like where's your primary skill set?
Yeah, I think they're so connected because, for example, I've, I've read in a couple of the minutes and also seen on Facebook, the issue of school start times, right? And so it's not just an issue of policy, it's an issue of budget. Because as much as maybe everyone wants to do it or doesn't want to do it, it will come down to the numbers in the end. I've done both because as the sole administrator of a program, you kind of do it all. You're the sub, you're the everything, you're the janitor, you're the budget person, you're everything. I'm definitely very passionate about policy, but recognize that there's a budget element to it. So I feel like I could do either one, but would probably gravitate towards policy.
Thank you.
I would just ask a question about what particular, any particular area that you'd like to focus on as a member of school.
Yeah. I probably have too many for one year, but I just, in general, as I mentioned, I'm very passionate about DEI. I think mental health too. And that, again, to me is more than just workshops or trainings. It's thinking about the source, like school start time, for example, nutrition and what children are eating. Like these are all sources of mental health as well. And again, I'm, I hope that I can bring the perspective of an Indian-American in this community, as I know that the population in the town has changed very much and hopefully can contribute that as well.
Questions from the select board?
I had the same question. I'm curious about, yeah, your take on the mask mandate and the Board of Health.
Yeah. Again, I feel like the Board of Health is there for a reason. They have the data. And as it was so articulately stated before, we need to follow the science and that's what's important.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
We should probably ask the same question as the other two. Like would you, do you intend to run again a year from now if you were to get on or you're not sure?
Yeah, I had actually always intended to run, but we moved in April. It was a bit chaotic and I thought, you know, I should probably go to the school first before, or have my children go before I run for school committee. This, this opening had just come up, but I, I'd always intended to run, whether it's a year from now or somewhere down the line, I wasn't sure. But I, I definitely would like to be part of the committee at some point.
Thank you.
Took my question. Anybody else?
Well, that's a question and a comment as a former teacher and school administrator myself, listening to you, I'm thinking, boy, it's been a while since you've been a school administrator. Things are so different. And it's your resume and your presentation pretty compelling.
Thank you.
And I shouldn't.
Not saying anybody out, right? All right. I think that's.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Next up, we have Joshua Saltgaver. Say it right. I feel bad about not saying names right now. Thanks. Thanks a lot.
I wanted to give her credit.
Joshua sounded right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then I just kind of.
No worries, no worries. Yeah. So my name is Josh Saltgaver. I actually, I live on the other cul-de-sac. So I live at 3 Douglas Road in Littleton. I also moved in, in, in May. So I've lived here about a year. I have a five-year-old girl who goes to Shaker Lane and then a four-year-old who's going to be entering Shaker Lane next year. So my background, I was in the military for seven years, you know, and that's really what brought me here. My exit interview, I was meeting with my CO and he's like, one of the things you're going to miss is like the sense of duty and like what you're, what you're contributing. And I was kind of like, yeah, whatever. You know, I got this figured out. I'm 28. And it always kind of stuck with me. And, you know, since getting out, I've worked in diagnostics and life sciences. Now I work in like water treatments, the stuff that's, that's fairly important. But I wouldn't say I've ever found, you know, that purpose. And something I started to think about was, was getting involved in the community more. And again, obviously settling down about a year ago, my wife got the email about the school committee piece. Education isn't something I have experienced in. Like that was a fantastic story that we just heard. I don't have a story like that. I've done a lot of like training, things like that with adults, you know, my, in my current role, it's a lot of, basically people bring me problems. You know, you see that on my resume as a DBSL. It doesn't mean anything. It's very specific to Danaher, which is the company I work for. Basically, people bring me problems and I have to create the model for how they solve them, you know? And then I lead the team kind of through that exercise. So, you know, in terms of what I bring, it wouldn't be anything specific to educational experience, anything like that. It would more be facilitation, facilitation. You know, I'm a very agile learner, obviously have had a lot of different experiences. So basically was just looking to contribute. And, you know, I'm glad honestly, there's such a, there's a pretty strong candidate pool here. So very impressive, but yeah.
Excellent. Throw it to you guys.
We'll give you the softball question. Is there anything in particular, like single objective that you'd hope to accomplish in your, in your one-year term? And would you plan on running again at the end?
Just ask all the questions away.
So like I always see problem solving as kind of like, like that's evaluating the current state. Let's, you know, strengths and weaknesses and let's think about what future say we want to get to. I don't think I have a strong enough assessment of the current state to say what I could do in a year. I'd say fundamentally, I've had a lot of people work for me who, you know, I've had people who've had multiple master's degrees work for me. And, and the challenge I always see is if I don't give them the problem in a very structured format, similar how you get it in school, like even the case study method, which, you know, is, is pretty well-touted and works pretty well, you're still getting this very well-framed problem, right? So it's like you give them the piece of paper, they generally know what they're looking for and they extract all that stuff out. But in the professional world, where I see the real value being derived and really people kind of rising above is the ability to navigate kind of a chaotic world, which doesn't exist in a case study or a word problem or things like that. So fundamentally, what I'd want to see, and this is probably a five, 10-year goal, right, is, and I don't know where it is now. I don't want to make assumptions about that. But I would want to see that, that increase and have people better able to kind of reason the chaos of real life versus these very well-formatted problems, you know, we answer in school.
Excellent. Great answer. Thank you.
If you want chaos, school committee is a great one.
This we can deliver.
That's the one problems we can make.
Yeah, yeah. On the, on the running thing, I, you know, I don't know either. I, I can't say it with, with any level of confidence that I'd want to. Like I love the ability of kind of contributing. Not sure I love the marketing, Josh for school board, you know, signs. I'm not sure I'd enjoy that so much. But the contribution side, I would definitely, definitely be interested in continuing. So I'd say it's, I can't say for sure.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but just again, you know, impressive.
I'll get to.
Impressive. I feel obligated now to say it as often as it applies, but I can very easily see you fitting in here as I'm sure any of your prospective colleagues would as well. And thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And on the COVID thing, so I mean, I'm not sure how the, like law works in terms of what the public health power is versus like the school committee. I think that stuff is a matter of personal opinion though. I do think people should have a choice. There's obviously a line that crosses with how it impacts other people. But I think at the end of the day, people should be able to make their decisions, obviously based on the facts, right, and the science and things like that. I think it, it is a stretch for when someone mandates something like that. But again, at the end of the day, that's a personal opinion. And if the power of the Board of Health, there is they can make that decision, then they can make that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, Katie Toby. Thank you for that name, Katie.
Two syllables on both sides.
Says chalk.
Hi, everybody. My name is Katie. I live at 89 Harvard Avenue, Littleton. Been here for about six years. Grew up here. When I was younger, my uncle's been here forever. His family's been here forever. So I'm very familiar with Littleton. My daughter attends Shaker Lane currently, trying to navigate through this COVID thing. With schooling and everything, it's been a challenge, but we've done it. I love Shaker Lane. I've attended a lot of the school meetings, the committee meetings, and I just really think that I would, I want to be a part of it. I had planned on running in 2023 when some of the seats were up. And then this email happened to hit and I was like, it was like, it was like fate. I was talking to my husband about it the same week. I'm like, I have to go for it. I have to see. You know, and if I don't get appointed tonight, I do plan on running. I think it's very important to be involved in the schooling and with the children. I'm really focused on the mental health part of all of this past two years and how it's affected all the great, from K all the way through 12 and the teachers. I think it's really important too, to pay attention to their, their mental health and the extra load that they've had to take on. Another area that I really want to focus on is curriculum, not necessarily approving or disproving, but just knowing about it. Knowing about new things, knowing about advancements, what things are being talked about. I just think it's something really important to be knowledgeable about.
Go Brad.
Thanks so much, Katie. You, you mentioned that, you know, mental health is, would want to be your focus. And I think you'd find a committee to be very receptive to someone with that focus. We've said it's one of ours as well. Do you have any ideas about what, not putting this far, but like.
Sure.
What kinds of things could we as a district, because we're, we all need to be generating ideas. Who are you doing to support the mental health of our students and our teachers?
I think, and I don't know what the setup is right now. I'm not involved as much with, obviously with the middle school, the high school. But I think it's really important, like counselor to student ratio, making sure you don't have one counselor for 400 high school kids. I mean, that's a lot to ask. And I don't know, we might have more than that. I don't know that. I think that's very important, making sure that there's plenty of opportunities for these kids to come forward with anything, making sure it's a safe space for them and make sure that they feel comfortable talking and maybe not something, you know, you still, you know, but still making sure that parents are involved. Like it's not a secret society with your counselor that you're talking about secret things. But I think it's really important to make sure that they have a somebody to talk to besides the kids on the bus or the coaches on the bus or things are overheard. I think it's important that they have somewhere to talk.
Thank you.
Sure.
So it sounds like, hi. It sounds like mental health is definitely a priority and a number one issue for you, for you. I know there are other, you know, issues on our table around school start times and things like that. Anything else you might want to surface as a concern or an area of focus or an area of interest that might interest you? Doesn't have to be concern. It could be something.
Sure.
An opportunity, something to use or.
I think as far as curriculum and advancements, I know, I'm also on the advisory committee with Shaker Lane with Binal. And they're looking at new math programs and making sure that things stay to date. I think curriculum is huge. We set a huge bar in Littleton. It's very impressive what we hold our students to. And it's just, it's refreshing to see that and to be held to that sort of standard. And we're very successful. So I'd like to continue that to make sure that that keeps going and we don't get stagnant or complacent.
Thank you.
Questions from the board, comments?
Same, same question on behalf of the Board of Health and the mask mandate.
Sure. I agree with almost everybody that said all of their pieces. I think it needs to be followed by the science. I also think it is a, a choice. I think it's very difficult to mandate everyone to do something. So I, I think it's, it should be a choice.
Thanks.
Sure.
I think you kind of already answered the question as for running.
Yeah. No, I do plan, I would like to run in 2023. I already had some kind of thoughts about that, wasn't sure where to start. And I thought this was just, I mean, what's more perfect than a trial for a year or so to see? And, you know, it might change my mind, but I've, I've been thinking about it since my daughter went, since we started school, that I'd like to be part of it. Thank you. Thanks.
Before I move forward, just, you know, obviously we had five exceptional candidates and, you know, we're fortunate that we have five exceptional candidates that have come forward and it's, it makes it difficult. But certainly want to extend, I think I can speak on behalf of all nine of us. That's why I got our school committee out to the select board. Math thing, you know? Thank you very much for coming forward. And if in fact, I mean, there's, only one person's going to get it tonight. And I love Katie that you were excited and talking about potentially running next year if you don't get it tonight. And Josh and Ted and Sanjay, Sanjay's been before us before. And if you don't get it tonight, speaking to all five of you, I'd love to see you guys, the level of enthusiasm and excitement and the, the call to duty, the willingness to serve is definitely there. So hopefully if you don't get it tonight, you don't, you don't take that as a one and done and I'm out. Please stay engaged because we can certainly use folks with the energy that you've all put forth tonight and with some of the ideas and, you know, some of what you, what you're bringing to the table. So thank you very much all for coming forward. And hopefully for the four that don't get it tonight, you'll, you'll take a look at some other opportunities to serve our community. So.
I'd just, I'd reiterate that, just very impressive to all five people here. I was kind of hoping Brad might resign so we could.
You got me both, man.
Very good. And like I said, it's, it's, it's good when it's a hard choice because there's too many qualified people. So.
Absolutely. So.
I can start and just put my two cents here. I am leaving the board and May 7th, I will not be running for reelection. This is looking to fill Timolin Rossius's seat. What I was, I was telling, talking to Brad and telling him some of the things that I was looking for in a candidate. And some of these were great. Losing me, you're losing an educator. Losing Timolin, you're losing someone with service in the PTA. Also losing two people with high school children. But I also was really impressed with, you know, the idea of having a more diverse committee. Those are the things that really stuck out to me tonight. And for that reason, I would feel my, my two strongest opinions, I would, Binal, I would be, I would think would be a good fit. And I think Ted would also be a good fit.
Let me bring you to this.
Is this a, is this a discussion or is this a roll call?
It's a deliberation and then it comes to a roll call vote. Once we have, I mean, I mean, this deliberation, I think that, again, all five candidates are fantastic. But if anybody feels strongly or would like to advocate for, you know, a particular candidate or just an opportunity for us to have some deliberation and discussion around, you know, what we just heard. Yeah. So I don't know.
Yeah, you want to turn the line? Sure. So I feel like I have my back. I'm not too sure which direction to turn here. But I echo what's been said is that we, I think we saw some of Littleton's best tonight. And it was like, it was really impressive. And the challenge is that, you know, four people aren't going to get picked. And I think that that's, you know, school committee election 2023 is going to be one for the ages. I hope that these folks all, you know, either get involved in another committee or your school committees are then come back up for it. Because unfortunately, four people aren't going to get picked. I liked what everyone had to say. I liked the excitement. I liked the fresh ideas. I liked your willingness to serve. If I have to nail down one, which I think is obviously the objective of tonight, I think Binal's resume and cover letter kind of put her, she put, you put your best foot forward. And you had a lot of impressive things to say. I think your. forward, and you had a lot of impressive things to say, and I think your experience would serve the Board well. So any one of the five, I think, would be a qualified candidate, but if I had to pick somebody...
We do.
We do. So I would, I'll, you, you went with two. I'll narrow it down to say one.
I was hoping Brad resigned.
Yeah.
We can, we can switch this up, and we can take a vote for that right now.
Right.
Easy.
Yeah, thanks, Justin. I can't echo that enough. I'll also say, like, I'm glad none of you guys got, jumped the gun and got to this last year, because you all have been top competition against me, so lucked out there. And I can't echo enough what Chuck said, like, please, you know, we can only let choose one tonight, but please stay in this, because any and all of you would be incredibly welcome on our team. So I think for me, I'm sort of between two. I really think, is Ted even still here? I think he had to leave, but...
He had to walk.
Okay. All four of you are here, and Ted, great, strong candidates. I think, I think Benal, very impressive. I think your background as an administrator, as someone in education, obviously, we're all parents, but I think just your experience in, in problem solving and decision making is really, are all really impressive. I think, Josh, also, your experience in, in just like logistical problem solving, and I mean, that's, that's so important, you know? We're facing this like puzzle, yeah, just as an example, with, you know, school start times, and, and it's a great place for someone who can create decision trees, you know, things like that, and logic comes into it so much. So anyway, I think those are both great skill sets. I think overall, and I had to choose right now, I'm leaning toward Benal, just for the sort of well-rounded combination of all factors. Katie and Sanjay, you guys do fantastic, but that's sort of how I'm leaning.
It won't surprise anyone, I have very little that's original to say. No, you guys are great. Like, a, a problem solver, a really committed parent who's really concerned about mental health and, and what's going on in the schools, you know, a track coach who really knows what's going on and knows our kids really well. Sanjay's got this wealth of experience that brings to us both within, in technology and community development and, and working with legislators. Benal's experience as an administrator, as a teacher, someone who's worked with Desi, as someone who's working with the schools now, you know, make a persuasive case for any of these people. And again, I want to thank all of you for, for raising your hand. You know, it's something to raise your hand, and to ask, to ask to serve. For me, I, as, also as an educator, I value that, that perspective on the Board and know whether we're losing Matt. I'm more inclined to support one of the two with education background, but we'll be darn lucky to have any of you, and if not on this, this Board this year, on some Board and in the future, it's, it's very impressive.
Excellent. Thanks. Well, I think we've got a, a leaning coming from the school committee, and, you know, it's, it's your Board, so I think, I think, I mean, I'm going to speak for myself, I never go first, I'm going to go first now. I, I'm right along where you guys were, and maybe that's because I, I did a couple of terms on school committee, but, but I do, I do feel as though the educator piece, losing Matt as, as an educator, and who knows what Brad's going to do next year, right? So...
I hate voting Brad.
Lucky to have Brad.
But I, my inclination was Benal, just from, just from the entry process, and that's, that's the way I was, I was kind of leaning. That being said, I, I do think that each one of us has said it, right? Any, any one of these folks could, could step into that role and would serve the community quite well. But I'll open it up to my, to my colleagues, and...
Do you want to go first?
Doesn't really matter. I mean, I can just reiterate largely what Chuck and everyone else has said, and add the component that unless there was something striking one way or the other on one of the candidates, unfortunately, we're, you know, we're looking at five that could easily fill the spot and bring different talents and skill sets to the Board, I would be inclined to defer to the school committee, and it's so nice to see that there's actually an emerging consensus there, which makes this all go so much easier, and, you know, so I would also likely be looking to support Benal primarily for the reasons stated by the school committee members, but would be delighted with any of the others.
I can't recall an appointment where we had this many qualified candidates. It's astonishing. So I really, really loved what Ted said about, about the way he talked about his, his students and the very specific goals that he had. That was important. That being said, I think Benal would be the best choice for diversity reasons, as well as her wealth of experience, and so I will endorse her.
Joe, any comments?
Going at the end, almost everything's said, but...
We can, we can really go there.
Like running for any office, I have a great deal of respect for anyone who steps up here, makes a speech, and talks about themselves, and puts themselves out there for the public. I, I congratulate her on that, and the people who said they would, they would run in the future, I appreciate that, too, because I know what that takes, and it, it takes a lot out of you. So I want to thank everyone that did that. We, we've all said what, what great candidates all five are, but I would tend to favor Benal on this.
Thanks, Joe. Cindy?
Can I just say ditto?
That works. It keeps us moving. That's great.
No, but seriously, thank you, everybody, for coming forward and putting yourself out there and applying for this important seat on the school committee. Very, very impressed with everybody. And regardless of the outcome tonight, I sincerely hope that you come forward and continue to want to be involved with our town government. We have many opportunities here in Littleton on various boards and committees, and certainly all of you are qualified, have a strong skill, skill set, and bring different, different factors to the table that would benefit the town in many ways, on many levels. So I just want to say that and say thank you. And I will just echo what everybody else in the room has said. I think Benal would be a great choice right now for, for the school committee.
Excellent. Thank you. I, I kind of feel like Don Sweeney in like a scouting room, because I'm, I'm taking down notes for, for anyone that doesn't get this appointment tonight.
I've got your email.
I'm figuring out where, you know, we have a spot here, there's going to be a spot there, so we're, we're going to be recruiting.
Before I read the motion, am I pronouncing your name right? Yeah? Okay. Move that the select board and the remaining members of the school committee vote pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 41, Section 11, to appoint Benal Patel to fill a vacancy on the school committee for a term expiring May 2023.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made, but Mr. Nordhaus seconded by Mr. Austin. This is a roll call vote, and I'll start with the school committee, and I'll ask Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Hunt, vote yes.
I'll ask Mr. McCarthy.
Justin McCarthy, yes.
Mr. Austin?
Brad Austin, yes.
Gold?
Jen Gold, yes.
Ms. Napoli?
Cindy Napoli, yes.
Ms. Glavy?
Ms. Glavy, yes.
Ms. Knox?
Matthew Nordhaus, yes.
Ms. Knox?
Ms. Knox, yes.
Charles Decosse, yes. So congratulations.
Congratulations to all of you.
That's the next week. We go to the clerk's office, then Corey will do it. Lord, I can give you an acceptance. You're welcome to attend as a member there. Congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you to all the candidates.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
That was a great acceptance speech. No, you didn't have to. No, if you want to, you're welcome to. No. Thank you all. This is, this is, Matthew, I think you put it best when you said that, you know...
I've never seen this.
Yeah, this is, this is great.
Impressive group of candidates.
Really do, really do appreciate you all.
Chuck, vote of order, just goes, I've never heard them. You have to convene our meeting now and...
You have to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn, second, and this is a roll call vote. Jen Gold?
Jen Gold, yes.
Brad Austin?
Brad Austin, yes.
Justin McCarthy, yes.
Yes, Justin McCarthy, yes. Matt Hunt, vote yes as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
This guy adjourns.
Take care, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Want to see all of your names here, too.
Thank you all. That was good.
It was in the direction of town heading, and...
We got a break for minutes?
Minutes, yeah.
Yeah, good. That was great.
Folks, we're going to do, we're going to do a three-minute kind of a active recess, just to let the room clear. Thank you all. Good luck. A little bio break and water break.
Do well, do well.
Who'd have got licenses next?
Josh is hanging around. He's trying to find out what we got him in the bullpen for. Right. This room is freezing cold.
I know, it's like, it's getting a blast, you have to get a blast of cold air, and then it goes away.
Just, I think we lost our town administrator. Bio break. Yeah.
I'll be right back.
I didn't see his backpack, yeah.
I'm waiting for you.
Uh, we are. Just give it up. You just like the grand entrance? We can get the smoke, the fogger machine, if you want. All right, folks, we're going to start back up again. We're, we're on to item number six on our agenda, which is a, a couple of applications for one-day legal licenses for Stevie's down at One Monarch Drive.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there's actually three dates that Stevie's is looking for one-day legal license. It's May 12th, June 11th, and August 13th. We do have Steve here.
I'm here, yes.
Come to the podium in case you have any questions.
This is an in hearing vote or anything, is it?
No, not for one day.
Hello, everybody. I'm Steve Dembrow. I'm Stevie's cafe at One Monarch Drive.
Always show up in uniform, too.
Always show up in, I'm always in uniform. It's a story of life.
I, I think that everything's in order as far as the application is concerned.
Yeah, it is. Maybe just for the curious audience, we might want to summarize what's being requested, or, you know...
Okay, so on May 12th, we are having a, I believe, we're bringing in realtors to showcase the building and the outside space for possible tenants, so they're having a, basically, just a cocktail party for all of them, complimentary, and it's being funded by, Cushman Wakefield is funding all of it, so that's the May 12th.
Kind of like a broker's open house type of thing.
Broker's open house, yeah. And it'll be for three or four hours, after 3 o'clock, I believe it starts. The second one is a, a family get-together, a family reunion. It was actually the person who's, who rented the space is the person who won our, our pig roast raffle for Feed a Neighbor program. So, and we decided to have it there for her, because we had plenty of space.
Very cool.
And the third one is a wedding, and it's a family member of Chuck Keats.
Okay.
Who's getting married.
Good, good. Which is one of the...
One of the owners of the building.
Principals of Jbsco.
Correct.
The owners of One Monarch. Okay, good. So kind of keeping it all in the family.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, they're a great group of people, so, that are running that building, so.
Absolutely.
I think it's definitely going to be an excellent asset. I will be looking forward to a full pour permit, hopefully, at one point in time, but unfortunately, the one-day permits have to take precedence.
Creep, crawl, walk, run, right?
All right, here we go.
Just want to confirm, I was looking at the, the forms in here from the police department. They look like they were blank. They signed off, though?
He did.
Police, yes.
Yeah.
All, all afraid police fire around building.
Yeah. Move that the select board vote to approve the application submitted by Steve's Eatery LLC, owner-operator Stephen Dembrow, for a special one-day wine and malt-only pouring license for an event May 12th, 2022, alcohol sales during the hours of 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. under Mass General Law Chapter 138, Section 14, held at Stevie's Backroad Cafe and Catering, located at One Monarch Drive, Littleton, Mass.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Move that the select board vote to approve the application submitted by Stevie's Eatery LLC, owner-operator Stephen Dembrow, for a special one-day wine and malt-only pouring license for an event June 11th, 2022, alcohol sales during the hours of 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. under Mass General Law Chapter 138, Section 14, held at Stevie's Black Road, Backroad Cafe and Catering, located at One Monarch Drive, Littleton, Mass.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Move that the select board vote to approve the application submitted by Stevie's Eatery LLC, owner-operator Stephen Dembrow, for a special one-day wine and malt-only pouring license for an event August 13th, 2022, alcohol sales during the hours of 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. under Mass General Law Chapter 138, Section 14, held at Stevie's Backroad Cafe and Catering, located at One Monarch Drive, Littleton, Mass.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Nord, uh, I'm sorry, by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. It's unanimous again. Three for three.
Thank you, sir.
Doing all right. Thank you, Stevie. Appreciate it.
No problem. Take care.
Thanks for doing what you do. All right. Next up, we have a presentation by Lupoli Companies regarding 550 King Street and senior affordable housing opportunity.
Yeah, he's on the other way.
Liz is on it. Throwing stuff at Modge, though. Signatures. Good question. More than three.
Yeah, you're right.
Signed them.
Yeah.
Looks like an episode of MASH.
Yeah, why are there so many of these, Anthony? We took three votes, you have six things to sign here.
Just one copy for him, four copy for us.
Oh, okay. Easy enough.
Thank you. Makes sense.
They did away with the carbon paper, you know, from the old days, we used to just...
One copy for him and scan one for us. Save three trees.
Yeah, it is. Harvard is coming up anyway.
Renewable.
Do you want to do minutes?
Yeah, while Jerry Lynn's figuring out Rubik's Cube, we can do the minutes.
Nice, better call.
We have minutes from the fourth and the eleventh, right? Yeah. Questions, comments? Gonna look in order.
Believe it's all correct?
You good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Moved at the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes of April 4th and April 11th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both minutes are approved. Thank you very much, Sue. Oh, they're good. That was just good. Twist that.
You can put them up on the wall.
You should have brought Sal Junior. He was, he was a good podium. A tripod, whatever you wanna call it.
All right, here, I think this is, I think this is good for now. And then I can work on that, but, and I know that we have a presentation also.
Yes.
So are you running the PowerPoint?
I am. It's the biggest I can get, Jerry Lynn. We'll just have to...
You can't go down the bottom and make it a slideshow?
It's a PDF.
Oh.
It's a PDF.
Is there a way to make a PDF a slideshow?
I'd love to go with you.
It should be in the tray on the bottom.
If you go View All. Oh, you know what it is? You have to download it. Did they download it?
Yeah. But it was downloaded as a PDF.
You should still be able to do the whole screen, right?
Yeah, you should be able to do it.
If I export this PDF.
Because typically, if you... What if you go home?
She's not, she's not great at easels, but she's good at PowerPoint.
Is it okay to slip through? I think it's fine. We'll just leave it.
Okay.
As long as we can get the idea, so...
You can hit the arrow to collapse your, the right side. So if on the right, in the middle of the slide, on the halfway down...
There you go. Yeah, that'll make it a little bigger.
There you go. Okay.
Well, good evening. I'm Jerry Lynn Darcy, and I work with LePoli, and this is Sal LePoli, as all of you know, and we're here together to discuss a couple of exciting opportunities that we've had several discussions with a variety of members of the community and board members to talk about the possibility of utilizing King Street for the benefit of a civic use and a new town hall. So, one of the things that we wanted to do was just walk through what that might look like and what the opportunity is. So if you go to the next sheet, this, for some of you, you haven't seen the latest renderings. The renderings are representative of the style of architecture and the approach to the site. As all of you know, we're really focused on creating a special environment that really celebrates that whole common, that you have, the historic nature of the common, and also engages the community on the street front, creating retail and pedestrian connections where everyone can really take advantage of this beautiful property that hasn't been accessible for many, many years. The next page shows you the site as it exists today, and I think this speaks volumes about that the, it's disconnected from the community. And the beauty of this master plan is that you're going to unlock great potential that this beautiful piece has for the community. This shows you the location, and this plan also shows you where we're proposing to put the new municipal town hall. It will be on the Green Quad, which is a big, big focal point of the community, and it will also be near the Tuttle House. As you know, we always represented that we were going to preserve and protect the Tuttle House. We believe that the historic significance of the Tuttle House and the value it has in the town is something that we want to celebrate, and having the green space with the town hall with the Tuttle House and then incorporating restaurants and retail, so you're activating this whole entire corridor, I think that it will create a vibrant identity that will really complement the town hall. The next page talks about the relocation opportunity, and, you know, a couple of the points that we, we discussed on this is what do we do? We created a destination at King Street that activates public realm, that's what we talked about. The visible presence next to the historic Tuttle House, as I touched upon, walk to retail and restaurants, a thoughtful approach to design and program, energy-efficient design, really looking at the space and redefining the space to work for the community and to work for the municipal departments that are here, and thinking about a program that offers a bright, cheerful environment that, that will also provide amenities and access to pedestrians and the community. We will, we would intend on working with the building inspector to really look at different architectures that coincide with the overall vision for the master plan. The town hall, again, would be a collaborative process. One of the things that, one of the reasons I believe we're here is because we love this public-private partnership, and we, we're really good at that, and that's something that I think has helped us be as successful as we are, because we see everything as a partnership with the city and the state and the municipalities and the heads and departments and constituents that we work with. So we see this as a collaborative process in working together with designers and architects and planners to really come up with a design that channels the overall look and feel that the town has in their mind for what a future town hall would look like. The core and shell, so part of this process would be developing the core and shell. So we would be providing a core and shell exterior skin, again, that would be a process, a very fluid process. We would work with the designers and the engineers and put together a comprehensive core and shell that also has a site plan and landscape plan that dovetails into that Green Quad. The operating costs that you would incur, similar to what you have here, you'd have your portion and share of cost, triple net cost, operating cost, utilities, taxes, maintenance, and that budget would be detailed, and that would be worked out once the program and the square footage and all of that good stuff is finalized. The benefit of moving the town hall to, to King Street and, and creating this new central presence at a very important juncture of the town is the opportunity to take the existing building here and create much-needed senior housing. So we see this as a wonderful place to incorporate senior housing and to really work through a thoughtful process with town council. You know, we've already been working with town council and the AG's office, so we would go through the formal procurement process with the state and with the town to ensure that everything is done for the benefit of the community. We see this as a 501(c)(3) ownership and management where it's, it's really a facility to encourage the housing that's desperately needed for a lot of the seniors who are here, and they don't have an affordable place to live, and they really want to stay here. The other thing is that this, there's synergy that could exist here. You have the library, and, you know, there's possibility, we've heard discussions about having a senior center here. So this could become kind of that hub where elderly folks and seniors could come and take advantage of all of the municipal benefits that exist with a potential senior center and a library. The other thing is that we keep hearing how important it is to really reduce some of the costs and, and, you know, traditionally, we hear 80% AMI, 80% AMI, but in affluent communities like this, 80% AMI is still very, very expensive for seniors who are on a very, very fixed income. So one of the things that we want to do is, is work with the town to designate a portion of the units as deeply discounted units at 40% of AMI, so that, again, we can have a place for elderly to stay and take advantage of the community that many of them have been in for their whole lives. So, you know, all in all, we see this as a really unique opportunity to breathe life into 550 King Street as we start to unveil an extensive master plan where you could take advantage of the mixed uses, the beautiful surrounding, the, the opportunity to engage the community and bring in pedestrian access, and then also to repurpose this building. And that's, you know, that is something that we've had several discussions with a lot of people about, and Cindy, you know, we've had extensive conversations, and we're really, really happy to be at this point where we can present this for consideration, and we would ask you to, of course, provide us with feedback, input. We see this as kind of the first phase of this discussion.
Great job, Jerry. Thank you very much. You know, some of the things that we want to point out very quickly is this. If given this opportunity, this would be a zero cost to the town of Littleton to construct the building, build the exterior core and shell. We would provide all utilities. We would bring power into the building, water into the building, air conditioning into the building. We would bring your tell data into the building. We would bring your fire suppression system in the building. All that the town would be required to spend is whatever their budget was for the number of offices of how they wanted to build it up. You would have no responsibilities for any additional costs for the structure of the building, and that's super important. That would be something that we would be responsible for. The exterior of the building, the parking lot, we would be responsible for. Your expenses would strictly be as it pertains to your building and what you spent. Now, whether it's a 99-year lease for a dollar, I don't know. The AG and your town council is going through the program, or it's Ed's able to segregate this piece of real estate in A&R and create a separate lot over there, of which it's your separate lot for a dollar. There'll be expenses, as Jerry clearly alluded to, as it pertains to plowing or lighting, no different than the expenses you incur right now. You would have ample parking, more than you probably have here today, although you share your program here today with the library and potentially, I think, the senior center or at least the courts and the balt fields that exist. But we want everyone to know that this is a program that you would be able to defer the expenses here that a much-needed injection for town hall to be brought up to probably what you anticipate the proper building should be, you'd be able to defer that, not spend it. We would incur that expense, and we would place you what we feel is probably one of the most dynamic spots in the entire 550 King Street program. So this was some ideas that were brought up locally by the town officials and some other representatives and some people within the town. We've spoken to the elderly, we've spoken to other people within the town, and we thought it was a good idea on their part. We developed this program, and we're presenting it to you today. And I think this also gives us an opportunity, as Jerry clearly articulated, to create this particular building that you have here in front of you that we're in right now, repurpose it for something that I think lends very well to senior housing with the library and potentially the senior center, and certainly the open space that you have with the fields and the grass that you have. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but keep in mind that we would absorb 100% of the cost to build the building. The town of Littleton would absorb only whatever the retrofit inside of the brand-new location to be. And I think it's super hard for anybody to give you any kind of numbers, because building the exterior of, of a building, I can tell you specifically, there's a price per square foot charge, and it is what it is. Is it 300, 350, 400 for a core and shell, depending on the building? Probably the answer is yes. But when you do the interior renovations of a building or the fit-up of a building, you're not, you're not creating walls in every section of the building. There's open spaces, there's meeting rooms, so it really depends on a price, it's not a price per square foot, because as opposed to the exterior of the building, every square foot of that building has a value. When you come into the building, you know, it's how many bathrooms, how many meeting rooms, you know, what does it look like inside? So we're unable to give you a design price because we don't know what you want. But we've spoken and had several conversations with Ed. He's, he feels very comfortable in describing to you what he, and had conversations with Anthony, my idea to have a conversation with Anthony and saying, Anthony, you know, what should we do in reference to the interior? And he, you know, he deferred back to Ed as far as, you know, a design has to be created. So with that, that's my, that's our presentation.
Thank you. Go blow up to the board, and I'm sure there's some folks that...
Do you mind if I start?
I don't.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate us finally sitting down and having this conversation. One of the things that, when this idea first came about, it was really based upon, I'm gonna say the premise, to create deep affordable housing for seniors in Littleton. We realize we're coming to the sad realization that we're struggling to get that level affordability that we need for that population in our town. You know, historically, other communities, we realize, have converted buildings such as this into housing, and have been very successful with that. So the idea, this whole idea of moving, you know, town hall to 550 King Street and then converting this into housing, from my perspective, was based upon the need to create that deep discounted affordable housing for seniors. So in your, in the presentation, you stated that a portion of the units would be at 40% AMI. What is, what exactly does that mean? What would, what would the other units be? What would the AMI be? One thing I want to point out is that we would have to go through a real, a design charrette to understand what the total number of units will be here. Right. Because that's one of the things that's still a question. We've, we've thought about it, we've spoken, we spoke to the architect about it, but until we really get into it, we don't know how many units. So we were kind of holding off on, on that percentage until...
So we were kind of holding off on that percentage until we understood kind of what the total would be.
Okay. Well, that was going to be leading into my other comments. So Liz, who is our Director of Elder and Human Services, has a wealth of information about senior housing, how units should be designed, handicapped accessibility, and things like that. So I think that she should definitely be involved in any of those discussions when it comes to any design.
Absolutely.
That involves our senior population. But that being said, I was of the impression that this entire building would be deep discounted as senior affordable housing along the lines of like Pine Tree Park, which would basically be 40% AMI or less. So would there be any, are you proposing any market rate units in this, in this building? Or would it all?
No, the whole entire building will be affordable.
Okay.
But the percentage of AMI and how that actually plays out, I think we still just have to understand what the program is, what the needs are.
Right.
But we have absolutely 100%, we intend on having this as all affordable.
All affordable, okay.
All affordable.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
And all targeting seniors.
Right.
Because we see the need and we're hearing, you know, we love to listen.
Right.
We're successful because we listen.
Right.
And part of listening is that that's a real deficit here, that they don't have it.
Right, no.
You know, as we all have parents that are aging and stuff, it's sad to think that they can't potentially stay where they want to stay.
Right, right. And we, yeah, and we've definitely concluded that as a community. And I know that Mar, who are Town Planner, can give more insight into the whole affordability component and who to partner with in this type of scenario. I just am not that versed in that piece of it. With respect to 550 King Street and relocating Town Hall there, I'm going to leave it to the other board members to dive into the questions on that piece of it. But I just was really more curious about this portion, the affordable housing portion of your presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you to hear from others, Verda?
Referring to this building only. And we talked about the 550, the new Town Hall not costing us for any for the shell. What responsibility would the town have for converting this into the 40, 30, or 50 units? I mean, how much, are you going to absorb that cost to do that here?
Yes, so that's a very good question. It's a great point to bring up because one of the reasons we see this as a nice opportunity to bring in that affordable component for seniors is because it's an existing structure. So we self-perform our own work and we understand construction costs, and we've had this discussion. So because you have the existing shell here, it's easier for us to offer that deeply discounted unit because we have more control over the costs of putting in the housing here. So we would absorb all of that cost.
Okay, I just thought that was a very important piece to get out there because there was some confusion.
Yes.
On that. And once again, you can't foresee how many units that would be yet because of, it hasn't been looked at yet.
Right, right. And sizing, and as Cindy mentioned, we would work with the town to determine what, you know, what is the best size, what is the best unit count, and then that drives the program.
You know, Joe, I think what's super important is, you know, as we were approached with this concept and discussed with various boards, it would have been inappropriate for us to, you know, kind of go public with this, right? Because the decision really lies at this board level. So we have been reluctant to roll up our sleeves and really dig into it because we don't have permission and we don't know what your thoughts are. So if you think this is a good idea, that's we'll be able to provide additional information. But prior to this, you know, we've been going in front of the planning board and they're asking us about the buildings and we're just calling it, if you look on the presentations, just, you know, office building structures or potentially a community building. So this is the first time that publicly, in a big way, we've had this discussion because we don't have permission or haven't been given permission to really talk about it or to kind of analyze it. Does that make sense, Joe?
It does. And don't take that as a negative. I'm just trying to.
Oh, absolutely.
One of the things I'm trying to point out is that townspeople have said to me indirectly or at different meetings, we have a new library, we're going to have a new senior center, and now you're going to be building this and that. I'm trying to figure out how much the responsibility goes back to us to get across to the townspeople if we go forward with this, what the actual cost of the town would be. Well, we can't do the actual cost, but with the idea of what, who we would be absorbing the cost of this building, that's what it was, I was trying to get across.
And I know the chair's not sitting here, but just to build on what you just said, Mr. Knox, the other thing too that we need to realize is that we have a park and recreation department and a school department in this building as well that we have to take into our consideration with any decision because they need space as well.
And we're more than happy to, you know, we have had discussions with Ed about that and what their program requirements are and their space needs are. But we see a lot of synergy, you know. Bringing the community together is a big thing, and I think you're going to create a centralized location here to embrace seniors and the amenities that you have as well as King Street.
Matthew, do you have any comments, questions at this point? Okay, okay. I have said it before, and I'll say it again, I think that when we were faced with 550 King Street, I'd be vacating that property, and we were all kind of punched in the gut, punched in the face, whatever, and we were trying to figure out how do we recover from that? And, you know, we met with a lot of folks and a lot of distribution developers came in front of us and were looking at shipping and doing distribution and that kind of thing. And Sal sat down with us and said, what Jerry just alluded to, we like to listen, and said, you know, what is it that you want? And what do you need? And I appreciate you guys listening, and that was kind of the first step. We met out at the site, we walked the site, we floated a lull up there just to see what the height might be, and we tried to, you know, answer a bunch of the questions that we had early on. One of the things that we did raise as a concern was this, you know, the home of Town Offices and whether or not we were going to be able to, just looking at options. And when that came up in conversation, we determined that it might be worth taking a look at. Can you take a minute?
Yeah, I don't want to create a hullabaloo, but yeah, I feel, isn't that great?
Yeah, do what you got to do.
Go back, I'll get a chair for a call.
No, go on, go on.
A chair.
But throughout the whole process, you guys have been, kind of listened to us and said, if what you need is, it's going to be too costly prohibitive to do something to this building and create Town Offices here and renovate this, or, you know, if that's one of our greatest needs, then the potential exists for this to be incorporated into this development at 550 King Street. So we're fortunate to have this opportunity for you to be willing to have this conversation with us, to look at, you know, to literally cost us nothing for the core and shell. Obviously, there is some amount of money that this would cost to renovate in order to bring up the stuff for this to be our Town Offices, including Park and Rec and the school department. But if we, if we're into a brand-new building at this beautiful location and it's only going to cost us fit-up costs, that is something that we, I think, would realize significant savings versus trying to relocate or re-renovate this building for our Town Offices and the school department and Park and Rec. You brought up the title house, and I think that's something that was a huge concern from the very beginning. This week, there was some concerns about the saving of trees at the site, and it's something that you've committed to from the very beginning, not necessarily specifying which trees were going to be saved, but all along the whole buffer, along the highway, along the exit of the on-ramp, we're all, it's, you benefit from that by maintaining those and keeping that buffer because then your market rate apartments and residences are more valuable because you have that natural buffer that is mature. So I, during the presentation, I had the same question that Cindy raised, the portion, but I appreciate you clarifying that, saying that 100% will be affordable, it's just a matter of what percentage is going to be at 40% of AMI. So the fact that this would then be given to a 501(c)(3) is, I don't know if that's, needs to happen or if it's something that...
Yeah, I think what's important, sir, is, you know, we're working with your Town Council, and one of the things that we thought was going to happen was, you know, to be able to, to, you know, that the town would absorb it, but the Town Council said absolutely not. This is a private organization, a 501(c)(3). You guys have to figure it out. We'll support you, but it's certainly not the town of Littleton as far as the day-to-day operations and running and things like that. Does that make sense?
It does, yes, it does.
Yeah, I'm not feeling great, but I do hope that the neighbors here in the street, I apologize. I'm very supportive of what you're looking to do at 550 King Street. I think I raised my concerns about this site here and for both ends of the deal. But this is a new subject to the residents here, and I hope they get a chance to speak.
They will.
Yeah.
Absolutely, appreciate that. Hopefully, good. Just to take a quick break and bring you back.
Yeah.
All right, so folks, we're just going to do a three-minute recess and just break. If anybody needs to use the restroom, we've got a little ways to go here, but by all means, we are going to allow any neighbors or any person that does want to speak on this matter. Yeah, Cindy, want to just flip that switch real quick?
Yeah, please.
We'll be right back, folks. A little longer than we'd anticipated, but everything's under control. So we're going to start back up again. We had just made some board comments about the Lipoli Company's presentation relative to 550 King Street, and also included some comments and some points of information relative to senior housing in this location and relocating the Town Hall to 550 King Street and the potential of repurposing this building into affordable senior housing. Before I open it up to any comments from the public, I just want to make a side note that the way that we got to this point, we've met an executive session with Mr. Lipoli and with his team, and Jerry Lynn, and our council, along with Lipoli Companies and their council, have met with, have had conversations and spoken with the AG's office and were trying to iron things out just to find out just how much we can, we can create if we were to put a new Town Hall on the 550 King Street property. So that is ongoing with Anthony, Tom Harrington, our Town Council, as well as with yourself and your representatives. So if there's no other comments from the board members?
I just have one question.
Sure.
I'm curious, as far as the process, how would it work to determine the budget before things are approved? I mean, how would we get to a number that the town would approve? I assume we need to approve it at a town meeting, which is going to be, there's obviously going to be a delay between when we agree to some figure and then when the town approves the numbers.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. So normally how something like this works is that I don't see a town meeting necessary. We could negotiate a host community agreement. We've done that with, on other projects. And then the board would meet, an executive session, talk about the terms of the agreement. If the board was satisfied with the terms, then at some point you'd come out of the executive session and then approve the HCA.
And that would include the payments for the fit-out of the space, for example?
All of that would go into the negotiations, you know, with the Lipoli Companies, yeah. We'd have to really structure that whole thing. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I just want, I just didn't know how we're going to get to, get to a number, basically, because that's what everyone is going to be asking us.
You know, Matthew, I think Ed Mullin can bring some great insight on this, and during this whole process, he's been asking me some questions. And being the building inspector, I apologize with his title.
Building Commissioner.
Building Commissioner, I apologize. You know, he'll be able to give you some great insight. Still, that process has to take place because we don't even know what you guys are thinking. I don't know, we could probably help you with some of the numbers, but we don't know how many offices. We don't even know what size the building is, which we're prepared to produce a range. And from what we're being told by certain individuals, we can build the low end and the high end of what's being described. I think you're probably, your town is probably being cautious and respectfully so, very thoughtful about it because you certainly don't want to build a building too small or too big, right?
Yeah.
So I think there's been a lot of dialogue with that. And from there, the numbers will start to arrive. But I can assure you, it is not in the same ballpark as to construct a ground-up construction, sir.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of what Matthew was looking for is, if we were to make this building, it's going to cost us some number. And I think, you know, what you're looking for is what is, after the all-in to create Building A on the plan and with all the utilities and everything built into it, what is that fit-up going to cost us? Or is that going to be, going to be rolled in? So there is going to be some cost to us as a town to do the fit-up. So there is some number that we'd have to get approval from the town to spend.
For the fill-out?
Right.
Yeah.
For the fit-up.
Yeah.
So whether it's a million dollars or eight million, I shouldn't even throw that without the, because we know what that is.
But that was my question. That's not going to be, that's not going to be part of the HCA, is it? Or is that fit-up money going to be part of it in your...
No, fit-up money would not be.
Okay, that's what I was trying to, yeah, okay.
You know, we'd have to determine when this would even be covered.
Fine.
Give me a bud?
Yeah. Just a nick, just a nick. That's what I was saying.
I thought they weren't going to turn you back around.
They gave me the option. Apparently, I tested out fine.
All right, good.
Good save.
Better to be safe.
Yes.
Just down a couple of quarts. So I think that was the clarification you were looking for.
Yes, that's what I was saying.
Okay. I was just about to throw it to the...
Yeah, that's fine. Obviously, I missed a portion of this, so I...
You missed a lot. So if anybody, Mr. Sanders, I see your hand on the back, so yes. Again, just please come to the podium, identify yourself and your address, and try to keep comments to two minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Sanders, 672 Gray Road. I have concerns here and using a little foresight here with regards to this, I believe in one thing, that the municipality has the right to own whatever it is that is the municipality. And what I mean by that, if you're going to build this building up there, that building and the property that's on it and the parking space has to be loaned to the town, not a part of that project up there. Because, one, that... I don't quite understand why we would go up there, it'd take a lease for a dollar for 99 years. I think that whatever we go up there and do, the town owns it. No question, no ifs, no ands, no buts. If we allow him to take this building, we will also give him the parking space here, the land and this building. And if it was a swap offer, give it to him for a dollar and he do what he want to with it, that would be fine as long as the intent was to do whatever the trade-out in terms of going up there. I cannot see us going up there when we got a school that's gonna come up that we're going to be building and we got the seniors sent over here that we got going over here now. This town only has so much money and we cannot afford to go and put outside the levy for things to be accomplished in this town as far as a town hall building go. Maybe we might have to wait for this town hall building to go up there. But I do not see us going up there and this type of information, it should be brought to a public forum so that people can have the input to say what they want to say about the town going into debt. Because we already in debt and we need to be paying down debt. And getting this senior center in here, this is a big push to do that now. And the people can only take so much. When you start to talk about, now, we talk about the school. They mentioned at the candidates' night about the school. So I, as a citizen and a senior in this town, I am for the advancement of what they want to do, the concept, but I think it has to be structured where that the town owns whatever it is that he's gonna give us, make that a separate parcel out of the 41 parcels that they have up there. I cannot see the town being at the mercy of the project up there for 99 years for a dollar. It just doesn't make sense. We're not at the process here of anybody having in the, the town owns this. And the same thing needs to come forth in terms of, you're gonna help us, and if you're gonna help us, at the same token, by getting this building here, you're gonna help to help the seniors here, but we have to look beyond the seniors and affordable housing in this sense. We need to look at, what is it that we're getting this town involved in? And we need to understand that, that if we go into something like this here, it needs to be a clear cut that the town owns it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Megan Ford, 28 Shattuck Street. Well, I have a couple of questions or just clarifications. Does the town own this building right now?
Yes, it does.
And would the town become tenants at the 550 King Street building?
That's the way it's structured right now, as I understand it.
I don't, it hasn't been discussed. You know, that all has to be worked out. It's part of the negotiations.
It's part of the HCA and part of the negotiations with the attorneys and what the Attorney General will allow us to do, that kind of thing, so.
And what Mr. Sanders said about a dollar rent, is that true? Is there truth to that? Would there be, would the town have to pay rent?
The possibility exists that the way that, that use of that land, we would pay $1 a year for 99 years.
Okay. But you still would be tenants then, in that case, if you're...
If that's the way it's structured.
Yeah.
That is, that is a possibility.
Okay. So my comments are, if, if you can renovate and beautify this building that we're in right now for housing, why not beautify it for town offices that deserve it and that are used to coming down this street, which is the character of this street? And it would be so close to the library and the new senior center, it just makes sense to have this be the center for the town offices and what it is right now. So if you can beautify the building to be like that, do that for what's currently, the owners, the current owners in the town. And then the other thing that I am really impassioned about, my mom and dad moved from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I live on Shattuck Street right here and they both rented apartments at Pine Tree Park Apartments. They couldn't afford anything else because Pittsburgh's cost of living is very different from here in Massachusetts. So the affordable housing really benefited my family. And going over there and helping them to move in and move out, they're now both living elsewhere, but I am very much involved in seeing those apartments. And I was there today helping to move my mom out of her apartment and there are three vacant apartments at the Hawthorne Building at Pine Tree Park. And I know there's a waiting list, so there, there's work that needs to be done at Pine Tree where the current affordable senior housing already exists on this street with easy access to the future senior center. So please fix Pine Tree Park Apartments. Focus on that, that's where, that they need, they need help. They've always needed work. Of course, I'm concerned about traffic, potential traffic increase with the potential for help. We don't, they're not saying how many potential units could be here, but I'd love to get an estimate. Are we talking about 100 units? Are we talking about 50 units? Are we talking about less than that, more than that? Because that makes a big difference for, for traffic if, you know, people will be living here. But these are my concerns. I do have, I have a lot of concerns and I think it's always best to own the property. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Thanks, Megan.
Can I respond really quickly?
Yes.
Just, I'm the Chair of the Housing Authority, Board of Housing Authority. I just want to respond to that vacant units.
Yeah.
The Housing Authority in Littleton is completely and solely run by the state. The town has virtually no input on any of the day-to-day activities apart from electing the commissioners. So those vacant units are being paid for, in some cases by the state, because they are so expensive to renovate. Again, it's prevailing wages. There is a statewide, as you say, a statewide lottery system for assigning those units and the town just has no input at all. So like, I agree with you that they're not in great shape and that they need to be fixed and it's not, it's like this board has, has absolutely no authority over that, that area. And so it's something that we have to take up with the Housing Authority.
Right.
Directly.
Right. But you have the power to do that.
We do, if, yeah, when, if, yeah, if we have the money to fix up the houses.
Exactly.
I mean, they are, you know...
Yeah.
I'd be happy to talk to you at length about this.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's all.
Alright, thank you. Anything else?
No. Please.
Hi, I'm Carol Monk-Popolo. I live at 24 Shattuck Street. I'm the second-in-command on that row right now. My question actually is to the developers. I'm interested in who approached you in the town.
So, Carol, direct all questions through the chair, please.
Who approached them? who are the fifth-largest developers in the state of Massachusetts?
Private developers.
If it sounds too good to be true, it usually is. So I just question how this all came about, the sudden, I understand digital's empty. I understand it's a very big building.
Do you understand...
Gotta make some money somewhere.
Do you understand how much we lost in tax revenue?
Um, pretty much.
Okay.
However, does the town spending money to, again, with the building you've got here, going into business with a developer as the town? Big concern for me and for numbers of us, you know, you're not, the developers aren't in it for nothing.
Of course not.
And they, it's, it's kind of, they own the land.
Because they bought the land.
They own the property.
Because they bought the land.
Right. So it's like going into a condo, even if...
So none of that's been determined? Do you have a question?
I, yeah, I guess I do. I'm sorry if I don't always explain myself well and I, and please forgive me for that, but...
No.
You know, it's a question, why, how did it come about that...
So that property became vacant. It was on the market, the open market, and we sat down and met with a number of developers who were looking to do a distribution center. And they flat-out said, we can, they showed us renderings, just like this developer came and showed us some possibilities, said, what do you, what is it that you want there? Because I may be interested in purchasing the property. And gave us some ideas and some renderings of what could be there. And this was much more in our wheelhouse than what we wanted. We did not want a trucking terminal at the intersection for a number of reasons, because of, we didn't want a trucking terminal there that are common, but also because the tax revenue that we, we wouldn't replace the tax revenue that we were getting out of a professional, 500,000 square feet of professional office space.
But was everyone suggesting that a town hall be put there? Because...
No, that, that came out of conversations. So, no, not everyone was suggesting that a town hall be put there. This town hall needs to be repaired, needs to be replaced.
It does need to be repaired.
We have, we have, we have a lot of things that we need to do. If we are, literally, our PMBC looks at how much money we spend on repairs, on roofs and on siding and on pointing the bricks, because if, once we spend a certain amount of money, it's one-third of the assessed value of this property, we have to meet all ADA compliance for this building. That would cost us far more than us doing a fit-out at this 550 King property. So we're trying to look at it from a financial responsibility. We're all taxpayers as well, so we answer to you all.
I know, I know.
You all expect us to do that and ask those questions.
But, you know, like, as I said, it kind of is, you know, if it sounds too good to be true, I always look at things.
I appreciate that and I look at things similarly.
Thank you.
Of course, go ahead.
Alright, I'm consciously not wanting to hit too much of a negative note here because I want to keep my eyes on the prize and our bigger objective here, what we brought before the town mutually in the fall, was the rezoning for 550 King Street to allow for this visionary redevelopment of that property which embraces our master plan and addresses a number of community uses, housing and obviously the revenue generation that comes with the terrific valuation. But the lines are getting blurred here between what was, you know, adopted and embraced by us last fall and this new proposal, which was not part of that discussion when we presented this to the town. So I think it's important to make that distinction.
Mr. Randbacher.
Mark Randbacher, 205 Harwell. I have a question for the developer. If we renovate this property into affordable housing and it's now controlled by a 501(c)(3), who actually owns the building now? Is it still the town? And who's responsible for the maintenance of the building going forward? And who collects the rents going forward? Is that part of the 501(c)(3)? Is it the developer? Is it the town?
So I think all of that has to be determined. One of the things that you could look at is like a land swap, right? So we wouldn't have ownership of this building. We can't really be associated with this building and have town hall there because then he'd have, everything would have to be prevailing wage. And that's what we're trying to prevent, is doing prevailing wage to construct, to renovate this building.
Right, I understand all of that. I've been involved in all of this. My question is, if the 501(c)(3) is ones controlling the building, are they the ones collecting the rent and responsible for it? Or is the developer still?
Yeah, and there's a lot of private nonprofits out there that do that.
So I just want to make sure that whoever's in charge of maintaining the building has the appropriate funds to do so, right? That was my concern is, so that if we're renovating this building for senior housing, the developer's not collecting the rent and the 501(c)(3) is responsible for the maintenance?
No.
That's, that was the question, because I wasn't sure where the 501(c)(3) came in.
Yeah, it's not like we're just gonna set up a 501(c)(3) just to hand it over to. It's going to be, there are agencies out there, to Anthony's point, that...
Yeah, yeah.
We look to get...
I understand all of that, it's just not complete, I understand there's a lot of moving parts to it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Mr. Wilson.
Gary Wilson, 1 Wilson Lane. I guess, I'm intrigued but not, not sold. Understanding the crisis we're in with the need for housing, but I also understand, you know, working with Liz and the COA, that Littleton, we're looking for about 30 to 40, you know, probably three dozen, maybe four dozen at the most, units of population, senior population that would want to live in this type of environment, a small housing, most want to stay in place, et cetera, and have other choices, so. And that doesn't solve, you know, moving out of here, we still, you mentioned that we still have the school offices here and we still have a park and rec that was, we have to find another building or we're gonna be building another building. So there's so many moving parts here and the intriguing part comes from, we have a developer, we've talked about it, the prevailing wage, I don't want to sell that short because that's huge. When the library was gonna build over here and they were talking about renovating and building off of this, there was a $16 million price tag that came with that. I remember looking at it. So it's not a small thing to do, so I can only imagine what this would cost now for us, three years down the road when this, this happens over there and they're doing what they were originally going to do there. And we're, we're now going out to bid, prevailing wage, to try to do something to this building. I just think we're digging a bigger hole. But where I'm not sold is, I just don't know what the answer is to those other questions with the rest of the residents that are in this building. And it, so, and it doesn't solve, and if we don't do it, we're still looking for, you know, the kindness of a developer, granted, they're going to make money, or the town purchasing a property, or a nonprofit, still to build the need that we have for 30 to 50 seniors that would benefit Littleton seniors that would benefit from that. And we have control over that. Otherwise, you're going to, same thing we have next door that was brought up, we don't have control at all over that and it's frustrating. Anyone in the States on the list to go into that building. So there's a lot of unanswered questions, but I'm just a little bit more, and I mentioned it in candidates' night, I want more information like everybody else because I think it, there's a lot of possibility here and I really think we should look at it hard and what we can do to this building. Sure, I would love to do something here, but I just, cost prohibitive. I would really like to see the numbers and maybe the timeline isn't working right now what we want to see done, but that's all I really have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Well, thank you all for your input and for your comments.
Yeah, I just, we want to kind of weigh in. Obviously, we welcome everyone's feedback and comment. One thing I will say is, we have done a lot of development in the state and we have really put forth a lot of effort, resources, money for the better of the community and that's helped us to be successful. We have built a Culinary Arts Institute in Haverhill. We have built a revolving test kitchen. We do a lot because we believe we're social impact entrepreneurs. That's who we are. So we're about the social impact. We don't have to do this, we certainly don't have to, and we could bring in another tenant. But we see an opportunity here to provide the town with a much-needed facility that can bring them forward into the future decades without concern about deferred maintenance, without concern about, you know, whether or not the facility is up to standards because the standards are changing. And it's going to be, you know, there's a green energy code coming out, it's going to be more and more expensive to build facilities that are compliant with the new code requirements. And I think... And I think that you have to step back, you can't be shortsighted, because it's a unique opportunity to not have to invest in a very large expense to have a brand-new town hall, to have a rebuilt facility that houses seniors, at very little cost, because what you have to do is, you have to figure out, what is the cost to renovate this building and get it up to code? Now, that money that you'd spend here, you would spend in putting together the tenant improvement work, the, the fit-up work, that would really bring the community forward for the next several decades. And so I think you have to step back. There's, certainly, we don't have to do this. We're doing this because we believe that synergy exists, and that an opportunity exists to activate King Street, and to, to create a destination that we believe the community really wants.
Chairman, let's move forward.
So, there was a couple more questions that I just respectfully wanted to answer. I very much hope that the local attorneys that represent the town of Littleton can figure a way, and the Attorney General's office can figure a way, to actually carve out this. We, we don't, we don't want to rent a dollar a year for 99 years, we don't want that. We want you to own the real estate. So, we're trying very hard to put that program together. That's our ultimate goal, right? We want the two lawyers, you know, the AG's office and the town officials to come together and consummate that, and create that separate law. And Mr. Mullen feels that's, probably could be worked out, we're anxious for that. I think what's really important is this, and, and the LaPoli Companies is very much under the radar, because we're, we are the fifth-largest development company, but we have one client. It's the LaPoli family in our organization. We don't build buildings for people, we don't, we don't, we don't go after that kind of business. We only build product for what we own, operate, and manage. Now, we do have partnerships, Paul, you alluded to a couple of weeks ago, about some of the recent activity that we've had in the LaPoli Companies. We won't be the fifth largest, we're going to be in the top two in the next 24 months, 36 months. That's our goal as a company, we're really working hard with that. And we took on some investors that are going to focus and pour money, millions of dollars, into the poorest cities in the state. And that's super important. It's not just about coming to affluent communities, where do we penetrate the poorest communities? And we were able to attract developers, Lowell, Lawrence, and Haverhill. But part of that meant that I had to bring them in partnership with the real estate I own, and I'm okay with that, if there, if there's a bigger picture. What's really important is the LaPoli Family Foundation, because you're right, we're developers and, and we make money, and I don't think that's a bad thing. Everybody in here works to make money. But I think what's really important is, if you look at our history, and Paul, you were the first one we sat down privately in a meeting to talk about coming into the community. And Paul, you knew from day one of how we impact communities. We've given millions and millions of dollars to communities. We've created culinary programs for the poorest kids in the state. We've created hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for hospitals, to the poor city in Massachusetts, Lawrence, Massachusetts, and we've created programs specified just for that hospital through the LaPoli Family Foundation. So, it might be unusual to other developers, it's not unusual to our organization. All you have to do is look at our background, and I think that's super important. This is the stuff we do. When we first sat down with the city, the town of Littleton, because of this property was so big, there was a lot of smart people around the table. And the first thing we asked is, well, what do you guys see? You know, what do the, the leaders of this community see for a parcel of this size? And one of the ideas was, you know, to create a new town hall. We thought that was a swell idea. We thought that was an opportunity to prevent you from bringing this building up to code, and this is what we do for a living. We're not, we're not telling you something that's not true. You will spend millions of dollars, and that's okay too. That's fine, to bring this up to code, and it should be brought up to code from someone. As far as the number of units, you're right. We already talked to Mr. Mullen, although he's not sure, he's doing some calculations, he thinks maybe about 40 units over here. We think that's a pretty good number for what we're told by the aging population, or the senior population in this building. We would encourage, we, we don't, we're not in that business, we don't run that business, we just want to, we originally said we want to give it back to the town. You guys run it, and the town said, no, 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 give it to a 501(c)(3), or they'll manage the property for us. They'll collect the rents, we have no partnership in collecting rents or being a landlord, we have no desire to do that at all. But what's really important is, you really have to look in our background. And our background is littered with doing impact programs for the community. It's not an accident, it's why we're able to lease up our products so fast, and we think that's important, because the community believes in us. You're, you're talking to an organization that is one of the leaders out there, and when people ask us, why do you go to poor communities or challenged communities, or why do you go and start projects? Because we get the communities to buy in that, you know, we believe in what they believe. And when we first sat down with this board, or members of this board, and we talked about acquiring 550 King Street, we didn't tell you what we wanted to bring. The first question I said is, what do you want us to do there? You know, and if it aligns, then, then we're interested in it. So, you know, we do make money, I hope so, I have 1,000 employees, I, I hope they want me to make money, because the food on their table depends on that. But this was suggested, we thought it was a really good idea, we thought it would save the town money. We don't want to own the property, we think you guys should own the property, not even 99 years for a buck, you know? Although, that's just like kind of a loophole that sometimes they do, so you can not incur a project and move it through quickly, I guess what the attorneys do, but we think you should own it 100% of the real estate yourself. But, you know, I, I hope, I hope that happens, I think it can happen, you know? But if there's any more questions from the board, I'd be happy to answer them. But, you're right, you know, I do remember though, when this was approved at town hall, when it was approved at town hall, there were many things that people wanted to see. They wanted to see, you know, how, how a project of this magnitude could help the town. And elderly, I think senior housing helps this town, you know? Maybe not a lot, but certainly 30 or 40 or 50 units or more, you know? I think it was this lovely young lady here that I spoke to outside that said, Sal, this would be a good location for senior housing when we first started. You know, but having said that, you know, workforce housing is important to this project, I think you're going to see that. Elderly housing, deep discounted housing, I don't know how many units we can put here therefore, I can't give you that answer, but, you know, certainly receptive. You, you can't go 99 yards, right? We're going to go the 100 yards on this project, you know, because we love this project so much, and we're honored to be here. But, you know, you're going to see something special over there, and we'd like the town hall to be there, but certainly understand your position. But we're happy to pay for it, because, you know, what's in it for us? We have 42 acres that we're now going to have, one of the most prestigious buildings in the town will be the town hall, and it'll be on a beautiful green. And we think that adds value to the people that are going to live there, and people that come into the community. We, we think that's a pretty neat thing. So that's why we endorse this. And that's it. But we do not want to own the building, the parcel, want to have nothing to do with ownership of it. So if you guys can figure that out, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sal did mention my name, and I appreciate that. You want to underscore that I feel strongly we have the right people here to develop 550 King Street, and I don't think any ill, you folks for proposing something that even repeated descriptions, I, I don't think it matches up with what I'm hearing from the folks in Littleton, and what I, what I feel is our fiduciary responsibility to the town, and amongst other concerns. I was on the master plan committee, so if somebody else here wanted, or to broach the subject of moving the, the town hall, it didn't come up in that process. And in fact, the reinforcement of this property as, this greater property as a campus for town activities is something we've doubled down on and invested heavily in, you know, v's the library and the prospective senior center here. And, you know, town hall, the building that we're in, the Shattuck Street building, will undoubtedly require work. That's, you know, that was happening before this, but this isn't the only way to do that, obviously. Nor is this the only place where we could provide housing. And as you just mentioned, you have 42 acres up there. You know, I'd love to see part of that project incorporate the sort of housing that, you know, is being proposed for this building. In Shattuck Street, already plays host to quite a few elderly units, and why is it not a good idea to have that spread around the community? Probably should be, in any respect. But, a, you know, and then just the notion of the town hall at the, at the 550 King Street property, at two levels, you know, both myself, and I've, you know, I've heard feedback from people across town, that they like the fact when they come to this campus, it's a little bit of a quiet spot in a, you know, in the parts of the town that are awfully busy, where it's just a little removed from the, the traffic hullabaloo, and you certainly wouldn't be that way down on King Street, just unavoidable. That's, that's where our busyness is, and this site is going to be busy for all the right reasons. It's going to have restaurants and cafes I can't wait to go to, shops I can't wait to shop at, but I like the idea of coming to town hall and a library in not too many years now, from now, as a potential customer at the senior center, God willing. The, so, I just, I'm looking hard at this and trying to be, you know, open-minded, but I haven't found anything yet that grabs me, other than to say, I encourage your embrace of deep discount affordable housing, and, you know, that's very much a work in progress, your property there, 40-plus acres, do something there with it. You know, that, I'm sure you get all the cooperation of the town, I think you found the town to be very cooperative in most everything you've had to deal with so far. You know, and I just, I'm just, I'll leave it with a question that somebody asked me this morning, you know, as the town becomes increasingly aware of this, as it's discussed publicly, this proposal, is, why would we go from owning a building to being a tenant? And he said, you wouldn't. And I kind of said, that's where I'm coming from too. Now, that's not the only reason, and I heard what you just said, Sal, but, you know, I apologize, this information that we received today didn't suggest that it would be an ownership deal for the town, and we just got that information this afternoon, so I don't think any of us have had time to digest it fully, but I look forward to doing that. But I, you know, I think it's the fair thing to do to not give any personal false hope here. I, I know you got a lot of work ahead of you, you know, making that project a past must with the town. By the way, you're going to hear a lot of people interested in preserving all the trees around there, and I know that's your, your intent, so, you know, as you do flesh out that development, please preserve a number of the existing trees. And as far as this town hall building moving, I, I'm not, I don't see how I would be supportive of it, but I'm just one voice.
So, I mean, with five voices here, right? In order for LaPoli Companies to move forward, we, we kind of have to give some direction or, or, you know, some buy-in or make a decision. But I think that the negotiations between Anthony and Tom Harrington and the AG and your, your folks, your team, can help us to make that decision, but I, I can't...
Which is news, by the way. I wasn't aware our town council and the AG's office had all been gone, I don't think that was ever, did I miss something on that?
So, I'll finish, I allowed you to finish, so...
Yeah, sorry.
Yep. But as far as Mr. Wilson brought up, and a few people have brought up, we'd have to find a home for the schools and for the parking wreck. And does the possibility exist that there could be enough square footage at this, at the proposed 550 King Street building to house the schools and park and wreck? I mean, there's, that possibility exists. There's, there are other options, but we may end up deciding to do something with Shaker Lane when, when that does come up, and maybe the school department would go into some sort of a wing that's built specifically, and that's something that's been talked about as well in each of the school building projects. So that, that potential exists. I, I can't, as, as dead-set against this portion of it, as you are, I am, I, I can't understand how someone can't be in favor of not only getting brand-new space for $0, with the exception of the fit-out, we've determined that that's going to cost us something, as would staying here, but the deeply affordable senior housing. For this to be, people talk about this being a campus, this would be a campus, you've got a library, you've got a senior center, and now you've got a population that would be housed in a completely renovated, upgraded, affordable, 100% affordable, some percentage of that affordability would be at 40% AMI, and that's just something we're not going to produce. Something that we would have some say over, unlike what we have at Pine Tree Park. The pros of having 30 to 50 affordable senior housing units, that isn't going to cost us anything. But in return, we're going to get a shell-in-core that's going to be as built out as the Attorney General will allow us to build it out. Hopefully, we'll be able to own that piece of property, and be able to avoid the, we've had to, I don't know how many phone calls you've gotten, or you've gotten in the past six months, where a sewer line has busted, a water line, a sprinkler head, this, this building's tired, and we're having to put more and more repairs in it, whether it be roof leaks, or, like I said, the repointing of this building, there's, there's just, there's, there's going to be expenses that we're going to have to put into this building that I believe are at least as much, if not in excess, of what it would cost us to do a fit-out at a brand-new building at this, the new, a King Street Common, where we would have a state-of-the-art facility that's seven-tenths of a mile away from here, and shuttles that run, you know, if people wanted to run back and forth. And to say that people like going to town hall, I, I'll grant you that people probably like the quietness of where it's located, there are some people that like that, but to a person, anybody that I know that tried to come to town hall, whether it be for the first time, or to do a, pull a building permit, or pay a tax, or visit the town clerk's office for whatever reason, registered a vote, what have you, it's not welcoming. People walk into this building in the basement, they can't, they have no idea where they're going. Now, to Anthony's credit, and putting that monitor up outside to try to help people navigate where they're going, I think that was your, you got credit for that, don't you?
Everything's a team here.
Oh, okay. But it's, it's, this is a repurposed building that we have made work, but in many ways, it doesn't work, and it's going to cost us, in my opinion, an inordinate amount of money to make it continue to work for us. And if we can create, again, 30 to 50 deeply affordable units for a population that we need to take care of, with senior center right out the back door, and the library right there, it's, I, I have a tough time understanding why that wouldn't be something that we'd want to do. Mr. Frascholoni, please come up to the microphone.
No, no. Now, my name is Gino Frascholoni, 26th Hour Avenue. That gentleman, in a sense, is right, but the question is, if you decide to build a town hall, if you only donate this building to the state, the state will build housing, apartment, without any money coming from you, or from them. The question is, like he says, maybe 40, 45 apartment, and it will be affordable for seniors. It's about time, let the people, the seniors, understand that you really like and love the seniors, and not only because you wanted to build the senior center. I've been here for 40 years, and 25 years I've been begging, okay? I know that I'm a very quiet individual, and I don't talk too much. But the question is, put in your head, if you, if you want a town, a beautiful town hall, like they wanted to build for you, give this to the state, the state will finance And then you say to yourself, we've done something for the seniors. And then the senior center will come... we done something for the seniors. And then the senior center will come, if, if we buy the property. You have to do something. You are two individuals here, we are the housing authority, we are very quiet individuals. But we like to help the seniors.
We all do.
And you say forty, forty-five, this, this what you can get, forty or forty-five apartment. And then when the senior will understand and says, oh, my God, my selectmen, I'm going to vote for those people, including myself, but I'm not going to tell you who I'm going to vote for, because my mouth is locked out. Now, think about it. If you decide to have a new town hall, and those people will build it, and I'm telling you, I will suggest and go to the state and speak to the governor, because I was appointed by the governor on the housing authority, I don't even know how long now, maybe fifteen years, is the one that put me in there. The gentleman over there, then he says, oh, my God, I don't feel well. You listen to the doctor, because we don't want to lose you, we love you, man.
Fortunately, it looks like it was just an antihistamine that I took for allergies.
I hope. So you, when you go home, you take it easy. So Gino says, you got to take it easy, because a lot of people love you, man.
Thank you. I just want to give everybody a flavor of Gino.
Yeah, you scared, you scared me.
This is what it's going to look like if you don't have them here.
I think I lost about five pounds. Now, this gentleman and this young lady, they're doing a good job. I heard about them. I'm a very quiet individual, I don't know too many people. But seem like everybody knows me. So you think of it, you got one, two, three, four, five. He's a gentleman over there. He cares for the elderly and for the seniors. And all of you do. And she works so hard to help the seniors. And you have a nice individual there, the administrator. Don't tell them that I like them, because I don't want them to know that. Okay? So when I see the new governor coming in, I will go and see him, and says, you know, the town has given you a gift. It's, it's a Gino. Three different governors says, is your town going to give you a piece of property? I try, I try. But for some reason, they have to sell it, because they need their taxes. And I don't blame you guys. But now you have the opportunity, take advantage of it. And don't make me yell, because I might have to call the ambulance.
Thank you, Gino.
I love you guys, and you know that.
Thank you, Gino.
Right back at you.
Okay, Gino.
Does anybody want to follow that act?
All right.
Well, discussion dependent. There's really no resolution here. Appreciate all the input from everybody. Appreciate both of you coming out and answering questions for us and presenting this, and more to come. You know, hopefully, we'll get some more answers and we'll see what it bears.
No, we'll continue negotiations, and then we'll bring something back to the board.
Good? Need some time to break that thing down?
Well, I was thinking of donating the research.
We can just leave it there?
That'd be perfect for the next person, won't have to struggle through it.
We'll put a pipeline for Poli companies.
Perfect. Appreciate the donation.
Donate it. It's new.
Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. We definitely have some loose ends, some answers, questions that we need to get answered. There were some good points brought up tonight.
Right.
I think one thing that would help is the, you know, where did we come to the figure of renovating this building, and how long ago was it, and how accurate would that number be? Because that's what we're going to be balancing it against, is, you know, what's the cost of fitting out a new one versus what's the cost of making this building long-term habitable and code compliant?
We have that through the Space Needs Report. I can-
That's where, that's where that number came from, from the Space Needs Study?
Well, so the-
Yeah, I was actually just pulling up while-
The LEAB report?
While we were talking, yeah.
From LEAB?
Yeah, we have an assessment of existing conditions of this building, which is really interesting. And it talks about the amount of square footage that we would need based on conversations with each town department. This was LLB.
Okay, this is the second number.
This is in the LEAB report. This is LLB. Which is really informative, I think, for people to understand really the condition of this building. But the other thing we need to talk about and take into consideration, too, is park recreation. You know, what their needs are and where they would prefer to be located, just based on the program that they currently offer.
Agreed.
We have the Shaker Lane renovation coming up. Is another cost. You know, everybody brought up good points tonight. There's just a lot more to take into consideration with this decision. A lot more answers that we need to have.
All right. So I think we can move on to, uh-
I didn't think so, because we did previous drawings. So LEAB will be here?
A.A., right?
Thank you.
Annual Town Meeting Update, 31 Shattuck Street. Mr. Unsaldi, you taking that, or?
Yeah, I'm taking that, thank you. All right. So just to go through a little update from the last time that we met, we do have some preliminary numbers that come in very favorably to this project.
It's great news. Be a little more enthusiastic.
I know. I know. I should have Gino give the presentation.
Well, I think it's important to note, historically, we were looking at the potential of putting the senior center on the slope site.
Right.
And our numbers came in almost nineteen, in excess of eighteen million, almost nineteen million dollars, to do that with all the site work and all the fire roads.
You're taking our last slide away, but you're absolutely right. We compare the cost of going from the slope site.
I was trying to set it up, give them some time to finish.
Thank you. So, all right. So we've seen this. This is the, where this site would sit. And you can see 31 Shattuck Street right there. The next slide is, again, you've seen this, it's just the comparison of the height to the new library. It's slightly higher, and it's just because it's going to sit a little bit more elevated than the library. You've seen the next slide, which is the programmatic space that Liz worked so diligently on, and making sure that all the needs of the seniors are taken into consideration. That's the first floor.
It'd be great to get that up.
This is the second floor. What we're really excited about is some of these new renderings, which I think would help.
Right.
Yeah. So what this is, is this is a Google Street image that LLB superimposed the project onto. So this is to give you that visual effect of how that building's going to look. And I heard something about trees.
Right.
The trees right now is, it remains to be what we could keep and what we can't keep. But remember, this being set farther back than the tennis courts would hopefully allow to keep that natural barrier of trees.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, but we were looking at earlier plans that had, like, the need to move into, like, as far as, like, halfway from the driveway of that next house, which this clearly doesn't. And I love this. I mean, this is, you know, getting closer to what we're-
But tree, if you go back a couple of weeks, like-
I'm just going to finish the presentation, and maybe we'll do questions again.
Okay, I'm sorry. But it just caught my attention that that looked hopeful.
Yeah, it did look hopeful, Paul, to your point.
Yeah, the Google Streets image with the superimposed center.
Yeah. So, you know, even with that driveway, even if we were a little bit closer on there, we would give them an easy throw right to continue to use that. So, but this is, this is some great pictures that how it would look on Shattuck Street. So the next one is a different view on the other side, looking at it from the corner view.
Back here, right?
Yeah, that would be, right, almost from the corner of our building, looking at it this way, across the street. So again, this is the back. You've seen the back of it. You've seen this picture. And then you've seen the front. And he, they doctored up a little bit with the sign on there, just-
That's the back looking towards Shattuck Street.
This is the front looking towards Shattuck Street.
But it's the back, it's not the Shattuck Street side.
Right, correct. It's not the Shattuck Street side. This is a-
Folks, please.
So this is in the parking lot. You're right, Chuck. All right. And that's just another view looking at the library to show you how the synergy between the library and the center would be. So this is that really exciting slide. So you're right, Chuck. We started looking at the slope site, and you and Cindy were involved in those conversations. That project has a sixteen thousand, sixteen-six gross square feet. The construction cost was fourteen million, four hundred fifty-nine. That was eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars a square foot, with an all-in cost, which is the contingency that, it was a thirty percent at the time, and engineering fees, and architect's fees, and project management fees, all-in price was eighteen, almost eighteen A.
Almost nineteen million.
Almost nineteen million. So that's eleven hundred, over eleven hundred dollars a square foot. We looked at, now we went to Shattuck Street. So, and that's what you just saw. And the square footage shrunk just a little bit, not noticeable, because we think that we have a much more efficient building, an effective building for the seniors. But that construction cost was twelve million, just shy of twelve, too. So that was reduced to seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars a square foot. So that dropped the price tag to fourteen million, all-in, fourteen million, six hundred and forty-seven dollars, which is a savings of over four million dollars. So, you know, we're excited about this. I know that Shattuck Street, 31 Shattuck Street, we're working with the owners on a purchase and sale. They're going to get full asking price that they would have gotten with somebody else. So they're going to be made completely whole. We're going to cob off that necessary property that makes this project a reality.
Redraw the lines.
Redraw the lines, give them some space in the back. You know, we purchased the price, it's six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. In a year's time, somewhere maybe next spring, we'd be looking at, maybe sooner, looking at selling that, hopefully that real estate continues to appreciate for us, and maybe we get all of that money back. But even worst-case scenario, even if we lost a hundred thousand dollars on that, it costs us a hundred thousand dollars to save four million dollars. You know, we're extremely pleased with the results of this. And our team, you know, Joe, and Liz, and LLB, and Brian Fores, you know, really worked hard. PMBC, Steve Moore, we got involved. So we're thrilled with what we, what we're going to be presenting at town meeting.
That's great. It's, we told them to shop in the pencil, they heard the message.
Yeah, I mean, it worked. But, you know, comments made earlier by Megan Residence, and, you know, I echo it. You know, I'm assuming it's still the stage of the game where we can ask, well, hey, now that we've got this good project here, moving that building over a few feet, will that save those row of trees? Are all those row of trees there?
You know, it's not as easy as just-
And then also, I think this is a separate but important issue, too, in terms of the, you know, as we attract more and more activity to the site in general, whatever uses those may be, maybe it is the best idea to have a comprehensive entrance and exit solution at the one side of the building that has the least amount of impact.
We actually talked about that, and it's kind of premature to talk about that. But we ran ideas and saying, what if we made, don't take, we just, this is talk, made Shattuck Street a one-way for the residents going out to King Street? So do we come in this side? So Shattuck, this portion would be two ways, but theirs wouldn't be. So that would stop the people from bombing off King Street, coming down Shattuck Street.
It's one-way heading out.
It'd be one-way heading out. That's just an option that we had talked about, because we heard, we heard their comments, right? The road needs to be repaired. We were talking with Nick Lawler as far as finding out, you know, how to sewer impact that road. That road does need to be fixed. It's, it's treacherous, to say the least. But, you know, these are all things that we continue to talk about, and we're just not ready to bring something forward. But, you know, and remember, before the library, this was one-way. That was the one-way, and this was the exit. So maybe we go back to that, but we still have to work through a lot. As far as shifting the building, it's not as easy as just shifting the-
There's gas lines, a lot of utilities.
Yeah, there's, there's, right, there's utilities, and then we need to test borings to make sure that the earth underneath there is actually, can withstand the building. So to have them go back means more engineering costs, more of that. So it's, you know, we think that for four million dollars, we're pleased to present this, and we tried to address everybody's concerns. And of course, those are the Shattuck Street, too, to lessen the impact, so.
That's great work, and I'm very appreciative of that. I'm sure everybody is. But I just, this is tantalizing, because it's so darn close. If this is, you know, how close we are to having the trees protected, and the integrity of that, you know, the property that we're taking by eminent domain, go back to being essentially what it looks like now, or some version of that, you know, without losing some major portion of the, either the trees or the driveway. And it only takes a little bit of an impact on the project to do it. It's worth exploring, I would hope. You know, those of you who are more directly involved with LLB, you know, please, you know, pass the message along, and let's see what they come back with.
Yeah, we will. And we've stressed out to them about the importance of saving the trees, too, Paul. And I think once we have to do the survey and plan and everything, and really draw out these new boundary lines, that it'll help us better determine, you know, what could stay and what couldn't stay, and what could we replace with. So, yes, we will continue to do that during those conversations.
And keep everybody updated.
And keep everybody updated, of course.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the time you've spent on this. I mean, that four-point-one million dollars is nothing, is not an insignificant amount of money. I know that you've been working with LLB. I mean, you mentioned all the other people who've been involved, but you have clearly been pushing for this, putting together the presentations, and it's, it's great. Like, I really like the new look. I think it's an attractive, and it fits in the site well. I think it's actually, yeah, I don't know, just, I'm impressed with the whole, the whole way, the way this whole project has been, has been, has come together. And it's great. It's very rewarding. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Again, it's not just me.
No, I know it isn't.
It's, we have a great team. You know, it's part of the reason why I chased Liz to come back to Littleton, right? Because I believed in her, you know, and I'm sad to see Joe, although I'm happy for him to have the opportunity. You know, he's been a great partner to me, and I missed out a lot. And, you know, without having people like that, it's, just something like this just isn't possible.
I think it's important to note that the owner of 31 Shattuck is excited about this, excited to be part of what we've proposed, and is very willing to be part of this, and is on board with, we call it an eminent domain, and that always has a negative connotation, but he's happy that he's going to be able to contribute to this project. And so I just, I think it's important for people to hear that.
Yeah, we hope.
If people hear eminent domain, they automatically think the town's taking something that, you know, you, I've watched up.
We're hoping to have a purchase and sale that the board can look at in executive session prior to town meeting. So we would just, as we normally do, go start early, and you could review that document before town meeting.
After all these years, we're one step closer.
Right? Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it is, it is rewarding, I think. You're right.
Yeah.
Well, Gino's not here? We could have said that we love the seniors.
Absolutely.
Maggie, go ahead.
You guys are going to get sick of me.
Not at all.
Mega 428 Shattuck Street. Thank you again for hearing my concerns about this. The eminent domain does have a negative connotation to me, because all I see is my neighbors directly across the street from me. My future potential neighbor could potentially be smooshed up against a brand-new building and not have a driveway. And I'm just concerned, I want to do everything I can to not lose focus. I mean, I know we're very focused on the senior center, which I do support, but I want to make sure it's done right. And I don't want to lose focus of 31 Shattuck Street and all of this. I don't want to chop it all up and then have this disaster. We don't know if by January of next year, when this may be starting, you might put the house back on the market. We don't know if we're still going to be in this housing, housing market that we're in right now. I remember in 2006, the bubble burst. In 2007, the bubble is going to burst again this time. There's going to be a difference in, in the housing market at some point. So we don't know if that house is going to sit on the market forever. I want to make sure 31 Shattuck Street is preserved to be attractive to a potential new family or neighbor for me. I don't want to lose focus of that. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Real quick, Gary Wilson, One Wilson Lane. So the, just was wondering if the article's going to be amended on the floor? Are you keeping the twelve million dollar request or are we going to? That number puts it well under ten million, so I was just wondering if we're going to keep the...
Good question.
It is a good question, but I think that...
You and the finance team maybe ought to talk about that as long as it, you know, whatever's the...
Is it currently not to exceed? So we could leave it and...
Yeah, that's...
But your, your point is, can we say not to exceed eight or whatever the number comes out to be?
Right, it would have to be amended where it's currently written, but it's just, I don't know.
I mean, could we amend it?
I'm one of those residents, if you put twelve million, people have a tendency to say, well, let's make it, let's do twelve million.
Can we, can we amend it on the floor?
We can do it in advance. Just, you know, we did that with the sewer project.
The handouts, yeah, we, the numbers move right up to game time.
Right, so with the sewer project, we changed it. We did a handout, we dropped that, was it thirty million or somewhere, down to twenty-five million? So we could do that if that's the pleasure of the board and, you know, we certainly could do that. FinCom has a meeting tomorrow night, happy to go there and do this presentation for them, take back to the board if you feel that there's another meeting before town meeting is warranted, we could do that and create a flyer.
It does feel like the smaller number would make people a little bit less gun-shy of it, especially if we're borrowing slightly more than half. I mean, we have six million dollars in the fund, five and a half.
Five and a half and then there's still the question with some oppo money.
There's got to be a happy medium in there somewhere because we're still in a volatile cost market for housing.
I think it's important to continue this dialogue. We don't need to make that decision tonight, but I appreciate you bringing that, bringing that up, Gary.
This is because we have our meeting tomorrow night, that's why I...
Yeah.
I would pitch it to the FinCom.
Well, I'm sure that all of us would be interested in finding out what FinCom feels about. Thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Sanders.
Hi.
Megan, you get your steps in.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question that I have is, my concern is, we have this figure now. We're not going to put the shovel in the ground this fall. This is going to be coming back before the town probably in the spring. And we're probably going to put the shovel in the ground somewhere after the spring, maybe the spring town meeting. Do we have any guarantees that this figure isn't going to jump up with regards to this amount that we have now at the fourteen point six? If not, then I think we need to keep what we have there and express to the people at the town meeting that we're not going to put the shovel in the ground this fall. So we got seven, eight months that we're going to have to wait. Things may go up. They gave us the best price right now to go in for the fall. By doing that, if we don't need it, we won't use it. So we're not arbitrary, just going to spend money just to spend it. We're going to spend according to what the need is at that particular time. So I think, as I was talking to Gary back there earlier, I think maybe we just need to keep it where it's at right now, although it's looking at five and a half, plus that runs up to seventeen, that backs us up from the eighteen that they came in and was telling us before. The only thing that I would say with regards to this amount that we have here, hopefully it will stay pretty close. The other question and the last one, are you going to put any more money into that reserve of the five point five? Because if you are, then perhaps, maybe you might want to drop that number down from twelve a little bit if you plan on putting a large sum of money into the reserve.
Do you want to answer? I was just going to comment that, obviously, we don't know. I mean, certainly, the possibility exists that prices will go up. We just saw that with, when we got the numbers for the slope. There is a school of thought that would say, keep that twelve because it's a built-in contingency that protects us against that. As far as putting money into that reserve fund, we haven't made a determination as to that. We've put six million in it?
You put, yeah, after this town meeting, it's five and change. But there is an opportunity, so there is the million-dollar oppo that we had talked to the board before that at some point in time you could use that. We've also advocated with our state delegation and asked for an earmark with that. Plus, I think they could be, based on the construction, I'd love for the building to be built tomorrow, but that's not going to happen. We have to go through a design process and that takes a long time, months. So there could be another opportunity in the fall or even in the next, next annual town meeting to put some more money into that, which would use that borrowing cost. But as it stands right now, we don't have to go back to town meeting for anything because this, the way that the article is all-encompassing, so we actually have the, that twelve million plus taking the money out of the capital, the senior stabilization would allow us to jump right into construction and take advantage of the lowest possible interest rates that we get and not wait for another town meeting.
Okay, I agree and I follow it and I understand, but the same token, you need to tell the people at the town meeting about just what you just said, about that million dollars and the possibility that the state may be able to come in with some funding. So we'll take all that we can grab, add to it, and then we'll less what we go in and ask for.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. So we need, we need to kind of tighten that up and get our story straight.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other thoughts or comments? Okay, let's move on to...
Correct me if I'm wrong, either of you, but it's true that the construction schedule may not happen until the spring. We're going to sign contracts on price well before that, right?
No, you really don't have a price till, after you go through the design process. This is a preliminary price and it's based and they try to keep into consideration escalation costs. But until you actually go through the design process and...
But that's the fall, right?
That's, as soon as we're done right now, you're happy, we're going forward with design right now.
Maybe I didn't phrase it properly. We'll have a commitment on price well in advance of the construction, right?
From an estimator.
Yeah, but no, but probably not for the fall.
Okay.
There might be a stretch.
Oh, Carol, before you leave, I just wanted, you know, you're nervous to take one more look at me. Am I all right now?
He looks pink.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's because he was just biting him. All right. So we're good?
We're good.
Move on to article assignments?
Yeah. Move on to article assignments.
Speaking of repairs in this building, it's either a meat locker or a sauna.
It's a seventy-one, but clearly that thermostat's not working, right? I hear the rice.
Low battery? All right, so everybody have their list? Any pets that anybody really...
Isn't this where somebody goes to the restroom and then we assign them all those articles?
The only one I'd real, I'd like to do is the sixteen, is the Oak Hill Stabilization Fund. The rest of them are...
Seventeen?
Uh, sorry, seventeen, correct.
I'll take twenty-five.
I'll take twelve.
Twenty-five. Joe will take twelve.
Twenty-five, you, Cindy?
Yeah.
Can we just go down a list that might be just...
One of the times?
Yeah. Like, one and two normally get called off on the consent agenda.
Right.
So I'll take those.
I'll take one, two, and three. I got it, one, two, three.
Joe's got it, one, two, three.
Those don't count against your total.
One, two.
Nope.
I'll take any questions on the operating budget if no one else wants to.
Okay, Paul's got four.
So who had one, two, three? Is that...
Joe.
Four is Paul. Five, Department Revolving Funds?
Sure. Why don't you give me five through, I don't know, something?
Five, six, seven. All right, that's three for you.
And some of those are actually going to be one.
One of the probably, yeah, exactly. Who's going to be doing Park and Rec Community at the Enterprise? Is that going to be Alicia?
Yeah, Alicia and Alicia will do the presentation on that.
Will you just lump me into that just because, just so we have one of us that's...
Yeah, so one of you could just, it's like the, this project, the senior center, I envisioned giving the presentation for that, but it's good to have, you know, you and Cindy worked on it, so they could speak to all the work that's gone into it.
Capital items from available funds?
I'll take nine.
That's Joe.
So who was that, eight?
Me.
Okay. Joe, you got nine?
Community preservation.
Sure, I'll take that.
It's Matthew.
Matthew, community preservation.
She's reserve, reserve for appropriation from public, that's PEG, so that's LCTV.
Right.
I got it.
Okay.
Eleven. Capital transfers, Matthew, Joe already took that?
I'll take it.
Joe already took it.
Oh, Joe took it, okay.
What was your interest age, Joe?
None.
Well, I'm a compensation grid, I'm the personnel guy. Personnel committee person, probably ought to go.
I don't have to, no, you can have it.
Okay.
It's fine.
Capital stabilization?
Those are normally consent agenda, but...
Somebody should be ready to answer.
Yeah.
I'll do fourteen and fifteen then because I don't have very many other ones.
Fourteen, fifteen.
I got less than, well, Cindy's only one.
Probably one sixteen? Didn't you, what's the use of...
Dead exclusion?
Which one is that?
The dead exclusion for excluded debt? How we pay down the excluded debt?
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'll take that. Talk to Sean about that, right?
Yeah.
I got seventeen.
Matthew at seventeen.
Want me to get eighteen since it's collective bargaining agreements?
It's been your baby.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll take nineteen.
Chuck got eighteen. My baby's got colic.
Cindy's got nineteen. Twenty?
Um, yeah, I'll take twenty.
Yeah, good.
All our mess, Chuck over twenty.
No, no, you should...
You should all get up there and look in by...
Yeah, Liz is going to be part of that too, right? Presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
That's how, so we did the show today?
I'll put a lowercase b.
There was a three in the show.
All right, cool.
Cindy, I put a lowercase b. You're the A-team, I'll be the B-team.
Okay, perfect.
So the school...
Non-resident tuition revolving fund? If we need to put one of us on, just put me on it.
Yeah, we can just put you on it, but it's going to be handled by Steve Markle.
Transportation Network Company Funds? What is that?
School thing too, isn't it?
No, it's, so that's, you know, Uber and Liv State, we get that little piece of money. So we don't get much, but that's the...
Screams, Paul.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll take it. Why, how does that scream me?
I don't know. I just looked up and I only saw three checkmarks next to your name.
All right.
We'll have in your packet. So we put some presentations together for the filming that we did all day today, which kind of spells out though, so those will be included in your book that we'll have ready hopefully by the end of the week.
Other Shakerland feasibility, because again, it's going to be school committee, but...
Right.
Watermain Project?
Was that, so who's that? Paul, did you say that?
Paul's twenty-two, Chuck's twenty-three. Twenty-four is Watermain Project.
There's just water button, right?
Yeah.
Put me down and then they're going to handle it.
Yeah, they will.
Okay.
Citizen petitions, just scratch that whole thing.
Oh, so Cindy, you're twenty-five?
I'm twenty-five.
Yeah, Cindy's twenty.
Citizen petition, we're not going to have anyone assigned?
Line, correct. Line item transfer.
Because I don't think it's going forward, right?
It may not.
Oh, they're not even going to bring it?
It may not even get, Tim is going to speak to Town Council about it. It's not in the proper form.
Even if it were, we don't have a consensus opinion. Everybody's individually able to speak to it if they want to.
Right.
Right.
Last one, twenty-seven, operating budget line item transfers. Again, going to be Alicia.
We don't have any, so...
We don't? There's no transfers?
This is an article that we don't really need anymore. The municipal modernization act years ago allowed for the select board and FinCom to do these line item transfers at the end of a fiscal year. We've always kept it, but now we're at the point where we don't need to keep this. So it's probably the last time that we'll see it and, yeah, Alicia will, Alicia will speak to it.
Because you can do this during the course of the year, right?
At the end of the year, you, the select board and FinCom approves it.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, I'll take twenty-seven.
That's a twenty-seven, all right.
Well, this means you have to hang around at the end of the meeting now, that's the problem with getting one of the late ones.
There's two. Just one side.
You want to be out of the game by about seventeen or eighteen.
I can leave early. I didn't know that was an option.
Tim's predicting a kick at town meeting. You say at ten o'clock is the over, isn't it?
All right.
Okay, so we'll get, include this in the board's book.
Town Administrator's Office?
Yeah, so, you know, I want to advocate for Diane Dickerson, right? Dawn left and Diane jumped right back into the fray and is, we're going to be losing Joe, so she's going to be tasked with a lot more duties. And like we did with other departments earlier in the year, I'd like to, you know, my recommendation is to move Diane within the grade. She's actually a grade ten, it should say grade ten, it should say step six to step ten and given her an additional one week of vacation.
So move her from a step six to a step...
Step six to a step ten, yeah.
Okay, so what is, is she a point six?
She's a six now.
No, no, but is she a one-point-oh employee, FTE?
She was, she was part-time, but she said she'll come back and help us again full-time, so she'll be full-time until we can bring somebody else in, yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's what our time certain is here, is just...
It's during, until such time that we're filled, you know, we have the town, the assistant town administrator job, so, you know, I envision four months, unfortunately for everything, before the office is full, hopefully sooner, but...
Any idea what the impact is? I mean, that seems like it's a no-brainer, but I mean, any idea what the impact is over a four-month period? Is it a thousand dollar... I mean, as long as she doesn't take...
It only ends up being, the salary difference only ends up being about five thousand dollars, so...
Annually.
Right, exactly, so, you know, you're talking about a grant.
Right, yeah, it's a grant. It's really the vacation that she was looking, because when she started with us five years ago, when I first was the assistant, she only got two weeks. You've heard now that we've stopped people with a lot more time, you know, so Diane's been fantastic and has given, but, you know, the vacation means more to her than the salary, but certainly, I think it's...
Will she stay on full, will she go back to part-time when this is done or is she, Will she stay on full, will she go back to part-time when this is done, or is she...
God, I hope so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Unless we burn around.
All right, so we're, any further deliberation, are we good with this consensus thing?
We're, yeah, I'm good with this, but I just did, I did want to, because we've done this on a few occasions in the past, the one person I feel like we kind of forgot about during this whole process was Sean, when he worked...
We bumped him up when he was the acting...
Oh, you did? Oh, perfect, all right, good, yeah. Oh, awesome, yeah, I wasn't aware of that. Okay, all right, good. Excellent.
Gino, how'd you lose 60 pounds?
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, yes.
Move that the Select Board vote to authorize the temporary increase in salary to step 10 for Diane Dickerson effective March 14, 2022, until such time as the new Assistant Town Administrator is in place and the granting of one additional week of vacation increasing from two weeks to three weeks.
Second.
No, I got to pick. Motion made in second by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Diane.
Good.
Sorry. Just looking to tee it up for you.
Thank you. The next item is, we put it under Building and Land Use Free Organization as the Showbook Associated Boards of Health. We did go to the meeting, Joe represented us at that meeting, I wasn't available that night, and we asked for the six months, if you remember, I did a six-month extension with the town's option for another six months. The Shoba said they'll gladly let us stay on, but they want the one-year commitment. I recommend that the board do the one-year commitment because I really think in time to, it's, finding municipal help has been challenging, and this is so specialized, and a lot of communities are doing it, it might take us some time.
It'll also give us the opportunity to kind of wean into it.
It does, and it gives a little training opportunity, so hopefully if we get somebody on, there's that little bit of training.
Yeah, cushion.
Long as we're not losing track of our, you know, goal.
Initial objective.
We've got, yeah, the town, a fair amount we voted a year ago, I think we knew there'd be a year's worth of time, and there's obviously moving parts, which we didn't anticipate, and that's fine, but job descriptions, or at least the job description exists, right?
Yeah, that went before, Michelle brought the Personnel Advisory Committee in last week, and they started reviewing the job description. They had a number of questions that they thought that there's some cleanup that was missed in those, so they asked to make some adjustments to those and bring them back, and...
We can see it again then if the...
Yeah, we'll definitely...
There was also grading of the position that they were doing that hadn't previously been done.
I was just a little disheartened when I first saw this, but I'm a little more hopeful after hearing you say that if we, you know, parallel track, I mean, we have to sign the contract that we have to sign, but that's not going to, you know, we're not going to hit the pause button for a year because we have a contract with those folks, right?
No, Michelle's moving right forward with that, so as soon as they do that, I would hope that we have something back to the board, their meeting in...
To a tweet. Yeah. Ready for motion?
Yeah, I'll grant you, sorry.
Move that the board vote to authorize the town administrator to negotiate a 12-month extension of health services within the Shoba Associated Boards of Health.
Second.
Motion made, second by Mr. Glady, all those in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Ten animus, quick, thank you.
So the next thing is the approval of the construction manager at risk for Shattuck Street. That number that you saw was inclusive of construction manager at risk, which is normally about $700,000 higher to have the CM at risk, which you heard from Steve Moore, who strongly recommends it. We had great success at the library, so taking this vote would allow us to get the CM on board now to continue to work with us throughout the project and hopefully saving even more money in value engineering the project moving forward.
I think I need to go into construction management if you're getting 700 grand for a project. That's not, that's going to one person, right? I'm just kidding.
The, no, that's the overall project, the whole project. Yeah, I would, that's, yeah.
Good money, okay. Are we ready for a motion? Anyone?
Any deliberation? Oh, we're good, good.
Move that the board authorize the preparation of an application to the Office of the Inspector General for the use, for use of constructions manager at risk for the construction of the Shattuck Center, Senior Center project, as recommended by the Permanent Municipal Buildings Committee at their April 13, 2022 meeting, and to include the minutes of the April 11, 2022 Select Board meeting for inclusion into the application.
Second.
Motion made, second by Mr. Knox, all those in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Ten animus, thank you. 9D?
9, I'm going to tee that up to Joe, who's been working on this project, I think, from the beginning.
Okay, so, I put this on to get an update, and we do have someone from Field Development that's here as well. I did receive photos from Ed Mullin today, he did visit the site. I'll be stopping by tomorrow to also verify they did start installing some of the landscaping, so...
Mike, just ask you to go to the podium, thanks, just identify. Thanks.
Michael Field, 95, Meadow Wonacay Trail. Here on behalf of Eminem Realty, Nine Air Road. I met with Ed Mullin out there today, and we walked the site, we looked at the trees. I got to do a little bit of overseeding, some fertilizing with some of the areas that were planted late last year that didn't get, you know, it just needs a little bit more fertilizer and seeding, and all the trees were put in, we did an extra row in one of the adjacent properties where we did abracities on 5 feet on center instead of 10 feet on center, just to give a little more buffer. Other than that, the dirt is down to the grade that we, actually didn't even get down to the grade that we anticipated, we didn't have, we didn't remove as much dirt, we had more of a buffer between the adjacent properties in the back. Other than that, I, you know, if, you know, someone wants to go out, anybody else wants to go out and take a look at the site, they can, I'm going to be there tomorrow.
Tell me that.
Any questions?
We'll tell you that tomorrow, Mike.
All day.
Awesome.
I just got, you know, some stuff I got to do, I got fence, I took the temporary fence down, I got to get that out of there. We're prepping for a water main going across the road before they pave 2A. We have a plan in front of Planning Board to reduce the number of driveways to one. That was at their request that we do that, and we have a special permit in front of them. Other than that, I did, you know, any questions?
You got Fred working out there, do you?
Yeah, he comes by once in a while.
Are you able to pull up the landscape plan and the, so they're having one driveway committed to avoid three egresses onto...
It would have been two egresses.
Right.
So it was two common driveways. The new plan that was proposed was having one driveway under a special permit, a private Town had, we had a peer review done by Green International, they had a couple of comments last meeting, they were addressed. With, you know, there were a couple, a couple small comments about some things that our engineer addressed and sent back to the Planning Board for their review. But other than that, you know, it was for, it was already, is already, 4A and our lots are already approved, that they suggested they become with one driveway instead of two. So with additional engineering, peer reviews, new septic designs, new stormwater management calculations and stuff like that, reduce the asphalt, all those things. Those have been, we're just, we're waiting for Plan, Planning Board to, for the next meeting. I don't know, you know.
The only, we don't have something that shows that the one driveway, the common driveway?
Sheet 3.
Right, yeah?
Yep.
Essentially the same lot layout, just one driveway instead of two. It's a little more buffer in front where you can put more screening towards the right side with a berming and stuff like that, instead of having two driveways going out.
Water management, all that kind of stuff, just, there's less...
It's actually, it's better, there's less...
No, that's what I mean, because there's less, yeah, to me is. I guess what, Joe, what do we, what do we?
So, I mean, basically, now that, especially, I mean, they've, the end of last weekend, over the weekend and today, done a lot of work installing all those things. Like I said, Ed took a look, plan on bringing the boots tomorrow so I can go out, also take a look and talk with Ed so we can compare against the landscape plan, and sounds like you're basically coming out with being in compliance with what the board had installed, so I can verify that and then report back for the next meeting.
Okay, so this is more of an update?
Yep.
All right. You there all day tomorrow?
All day.
You want a coffee?
No, good, no, interesting, yeah. All right.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So we have just one left, right?
Me, Fred.
Yep.
All right, so, the, everybody submitted their evaluations to, I assume everybody's had evaluations to Ms. Brewer, and they're being aggregated. It is her hope to have those done for Wednesday, and if she has them done for Wednesday, my hope for everybody to get a copy of that aggregate, and if we're able to do so, I'd like to post the meeting for Thursday. I'd need to post that tomorrow if we're going to do that. First and foremost, Anthony, are you available on Thursday?
Yes.
So, how's the availability of the board?
So, we'll get the aggregate Wednesday?
Correct.
What if members have comments or things that they want to change or make?
Yeah, the point of getting the aggregate is for us to review it and then see if it reflects what we wrote in the original.
I also had that concern, I guess, let's post the meeting and not use it if we decide that the summary isn't accurate and we need to go back and do some revisions on it. I don't want to get into a position where we're going to a public meeting without fully, like, reviewing the review.
As long as that's the understanding, I don't mind going ahead and scheduling the meeting, as long as we, you know...
But if it comes back and...
I didn't make that statement, but yeah, that was my...
Well, he made that statement.
I know, but I made that statement to him earlier.
If we, if we all agree that it's accurate and we're going to go forward with it, then we'll have them, we'll do the meeting on Thursday.
Presuming she gets it to us, as we're anticipating, and that we are okay with it, then...
Yes, exactly.
Something in there, somebody's...
If there's no need to meet because we don't feel like it meets what our expectations, then we just cancel the meeting.
And then we'll have to wait until after the election because, or after the town meeting, because I think you're gone next week, Tuesday through...
Yeah. Town meeting's Monday night, and you're gone the next day.
Wednesday morning.
Okay.
See you in a poster tomorrow. Chuck for this Thursday?
I'm going to post tomorrow, yes.
What time Thursday?
That's up to the board.
I think we already have a Thursday morning meeting. We do a, a 12...
We do a 10, yeah, 9 or 10.
Either way would work for me.
I guess I figured out the volume because of my forms.
Oh, good.
Christmas tree.
I'm free on Thursdays, so... I'm free all morning and then anytime after, like, 4:30.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not taking time off for work.
The, it would have to be an evening thing, or a late afternoon for me as well.
Anytime in the evening's fine.
I guess I haven't set up my Google Calendar.
Oh, dear.
I'll make it work.
Okay.
Whatever it is, I'll make it work. What, is there, do you have a preference? 5:30? 5:30?
Sure.
It's fine. Okay. Most of every day, got it. All right. So that is the 28th?
Correct.
Yes. Okay, so we're okay with that, we've already done the minutes, I'll understand a motion to adjourn.